So it's Monday, May 12th, 2025. This is a study session of the Minnetonka City Council. I'll call this meeting to order and then I will turn to Miranda and we will start with introductions and go around the room.
I'm Anna Dom, Assistant City Manager.
Darren Nelson, Finance Director.
Mike Fung, City Manager.
Kimberly Wilburn, Minnetonka City Council at Large.
Patty Foster-Bolton, Ward 1.
Rebecca Shack, Ward 2.
Brad Weersum, Mayor.
Paula Romailly, Ward 3.
Deb Calvert, at-large, Seat A.
Eric Nielsen, City Attorney.
Scott Borben, Police Chief.
Kelly O'Dea, Recreation Director.
Sarah Westy, Assistant Recreation Director.
Jason Day, Deputy Chief, please.
Teresa Fox, Senior Management Coordinator.
Julie Wishak, Design Development Director.
Kevin Fox, Borough Chief.
Will Manchester, Government Director.
Joel Mary, Assistant Finance Director.
Kevin Ringhoffer, Resident.
Tom Stocker, Resident.
All right, well, welcome, everyone. I hope everyone had a nice Mother's Day and a good weekend. And with that, we get to the business items. I'm going to turn it over to Mike.
Thank you, Brad. Good evening, Council and staff. Tonight, we have two agenda items. Before we get to our agenda items, just want to note there is an addenda for your consideration this evening. There was in the packet for item two tonight, which was a deeper dive in the budget. We had put in there the staff presentations from the Marsh study session. Inadvertently, the Public Works presentation was not in that. So in your addenda is Public Works. So I just want to just point that out to you this evening. And then also, Councilmember Coakley is absent. She did send in some written comments to me. I have printed those off, excuse me, and those are in front of you as well. Make sure we get that over to our city clerk for posting, I think, in our packet as well. So with that, that's just a couple of updates. And then I'd like to really turn it over to our Rec Director and Assistant Rec Director, Kelly. And Kelly O'Dea, I think, is going to lead the presentation. And then Sarah Westy will, I think, also be assisting. So Kelly and Sarah, really, with tonight's two items, the first one again is revisit of our recreation facilities. And really, I think I teed this up last time in our study session in that, rewind the clock to a month ago, we had our fire chief here, Kevin Fox, presenting on the facility studies related to the fire stations. And then what we wanted to do this evening, as it relates to our major facility discussion, is to revisit our recreation facilities. This is the same information that was presented to you about a year ago and thought it would be just a really good opportunity to have a refresher on what that looked like. And so Kelly and Sarah will go that, do that this evening. And then after that, we'll re-tee up in our overall budget conversation. With that, Mayor and Council, I'd like to really turn it over to Kelly and Sarah.
Sounds good. Sarah's actually going to start. Go forward. Excellent. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So like Mike said, this is going to be a refresher. And at the end of this, we just want to make sure that you're still in support of the preferred options that we discussed last year, or if you have any changes to those options. So first slide, I just want to go over the timeline of what's happened over the last several years. As you know, kind of what kicked this off is the purchase of the Marsh in February of 2023. And then we did open in May that year. So we just had our two-year anniversary and had a little celebration a couple of weekends ago. After purchasing the Marsh, we did conduct a study. So that took place from fall of 2023 to spring of 2024. And then we came back to you to go through that draft study in April of 2024. And then you accepted that in May, at May 6 of 2024. And then we talked about it through the budget process for the 2025 discussion. So what was in the study? So the full study did get put in the packet, in case you needed to refer to it. But what we were studying was Glen Lake Activity Center, the Community Center, Williston, and then the Marsh. And it included community engagement, the facility assessments for each facility, space needs and recommendations, and then cost estimates. So that's really kind of the high level, what we've been doing the last several years and why we're here to talk about our facilities. And then I'll have Kelly go through each of the facilities in detail.
Sounds good. So the first one is Glen Lake Activity Center. You know, a couple of points here is it's a building that's definitely dated. It was an old fire station back in the day. I think many of you have seen it. Underutilized, right now, we schedule about 400 hours of use per year, which has been consistent over the past few years. And then with the addition of a few new areas, including Ridge Dale Commons and the Marsh, that space has been kind of relieved of pressure. We have other meeting spaces within other city facilities. So again, we've got about 400 hours that we currently use for whether it's rec programming or rentals, like Boys Scouts, Girl Scouts, things like that. The two options that came from the study, number one was to just demo the building and kind of prepare it for our skate park. We've been talking about a skate park, an enhanced skate park in Glen Lake that would cost about $112,000. Or the second option was a partial demo and then a renovation of that building, and that was a little bit over $800,000. So we brought that to you last year, discussed those options, and we heard feedback from the council that it seemed like, number one, that just the demo of the building seemed to be kind of the preferred option. So again, we're just here to refresh your memory of what we discussed last year, the study, see if you're still in agreement with that, or if you have any other comments or changes. But we're still looking at the skate park. Our Park and Trail Planner, Matt Komka, is working with a designer right now to design that area specifically, that park area, which would include a skate park. We do have dollars set aside in our CIP for 2026 for that. So, you know, we still think that that's a good spot for a skate park. So Mayor, I don't know if you want to talk about each facility, or if you want to go all the way to the end after four, whatever.
Well, yeah, let's, I think, let's go through, let's go through all four. And if anyone has questions, we'll get them asked at the end.
Sounds good. The second building is a community center. As you know, we are right adjacent to the community center. It's a well-used facility, senior programming. We get a number of rentals, whether it's weddings, celebrations of life, things like that. Then we also have a lot of meetings and events here, too. So Kids Fest, city council meetings, all the commissions meet here. So it's a really busy facility, especially with the senior programming. If you come in the weekday mornings, it's a busy place. Luncheon movie today had 100-plus, so definitely a very busy building. You may remember that before we purchased the Marsh, we had some plans to remodel the facility. That was in 2022. Updated finishes. We, you know, it was a little bit dated here as well. Restrooms needed some attention, and then a more prominent updated front desk. So the plan was to update that. We had bids out. We actually had some, some good bids that came in. So that is option number one, was to just move forward with those plans that we had before we purchased the Marsh, Marsh back in 2022. Price tag on that was $2.7 million. And then when we looked at that study last year, there were two alternates. And I think the council discussed alter, option number two here, which was some updated lounge improvements with some self-serve coffee areas. And then there was a second alternative that would include a different exterior addition so you could get to some of the areas of the community center a little bit easier. So when we talked about those, it seemed, council seemed supportive of still doing that renovation and with the potential of adding that option number two for $15,000, so some enhanced lounge areas. I'll move on to the next, which is the Williston Fitness Center. So Williston Center is busy, currently has 10,500 members, you know, active uses there. We've got the tennis courts, fitness, swimming pools. It's been very, very busy for a number of years, which is a good thing. We renovated that building back in 2010. That really kind of prompted, I think, before that renovation, we had just under 2,000 members. And like I said, we have 10,500 members right now. You know, some of the constraints would be the lobby, some of the common areas. Treehouse is busy. The parking is, can be challenging at times. Locker rooms, I think specifically, are definitely challenging at times. So really, it was kind of an à la carte option where we looked at a number of different options. Those range from anywhere from $100,000 to 20-plus million dollars. So if you want to go to the next, yeah, a big range. So if you remember this slide, we see both levels of Williston here, where we have specific boxes. And we talked in detail and got good feedback in detail from you all last year about some of the things that maybe were preferred, or some of the things that weren't preferred. An example would be on the right-hand picture, option number 11. So that would be in addition to the south side of the tennis courts. That would look at pickleball. That was, you know, it'd be wonderful to get pickleball, but the price tag on that maybe wasn't, wasn't the best. Number 12, the tennis court, that was adding air conditioning to the tennis court. Probably a nice thing to have, but maybe not necessarily one of our top priorities. The picture to the left shows number six and seven. Number six would be an expanded splash pad. So we've got our main lap pool, and we've got our splash pad. That would be an expanded splash pad. And number seven was park, additional parking into that hill on the east side of the building. So those were some of the things that maybe weren't the top priority. So as we looked through these, we thought, you know, and we kind of summarized it as interior, high-use, common spaces, you know, fitness areas, locker rooms, spaces where people travel through were kind of the highest priority. So in that range of $100,000 to 20-plus million dollars, those came in with a price tag of about $5 million for those. And then the last building is the Marsh. So as Sarah mentioned, we purchased the Marsh in 2023, so we've been operating it for two years right now. It's, it's well-used. When we took over, we estimated the YMCA had about 1,000 members or so. We're over 7,000 members right now, which is, which is amazing. So a lot of people are coming through the door. It's a very busy facility. We're starting to see more people rent rooms. We're starting to see more people participate in programs that we're offering. So things are definitely trending in a good way. High demand for, for certain aspects of that. The therapy pool is, I think, the thing that's really sought out of, sought after. A lot of the yoga classes and the mind-body classes are very popular, but it's, it's definitely a dated facility. The building is 40 years old. It probably, the deferred maintenance, you know, is extensive. The YMCA and/or the previous owner was probably deferring some of those large-ticket items. So the study presented four different options. Option number one was just to do some of the deferred maintenance and an interior refresh of the building. That was about a $7 million price tag over 10 years. Option two was a renovation and program expansion. So that looked at updating everything. So that included everything in option one, plus some significant renovations to both, both the east and west portions of the building. So the west side, where the restaurant and cafe would be, and then on the east side, where we have a lot of the rental space. Option three was all of option one and two, plus the addition of an event pavilion on the west. So think of where the, it's a parking lot right now, but to the west of the cafe, where we could add an event pavilion. And then the fourth option was to sell the property. That's always been an option, and I think the council had that, they're open-minded, and all the options were on the table. You know, what we heard last year was, was a lot of people kind of gravitated toward option number two, is what we heard. Definitely a big price tag, but I think that's what we kind of heard. We did have a couple of people who were talking about the pavilion, but, you know, funding sources, obviously, that's, that's the big, big key issue here. So a couple of pictures from the Marsh, some of the rendering. So option two, which again, we talked about a little bit more detail, again, both the east and west side, so large-scale renovation to the areas, the rental areas, on the west side, east side, I'm sorry. And then on the west side, the cafe, including new office space. I think the next slide shows different levels. So kind of where we have the, some of the meeting spaces there, more of a, more rental space, more options for people who come in and have events and parties and things like that. And then definitely updating the locker rooms. I think the locker rooms are kind of in an awkward space, and to get from locker rooms to pool areas is, is challenging. And so just a big overhaul of locker room areas seemed like part of that. Option three, as I mentioned, was that expansion to the west. So as you can see, they've got that pavilion-type style piece, structure on the west of the cafe. And that was just the rendering that would show option three. So that's a quick overview of where we were. Again, we're just here for a refresher to see if you had any other thoughts, any ideas, if you agreed with what we kind of discussed last year. Open for questions or comments, I guess.
Great. Thanks, Kelly. Yeah, that, I think you covered it very efficiently, and I think you laid out the options well. So I think the first thing I'll ask the council is, do you have any questions about what we just saw or of the status of things? Any questions, then we'll go to comments. Yes, Kimberly.
So if I remember correctly, the packet said that the Marsh is in the CIP. Does that, does that mean that there's, like, funds already set aside?
I think the only, the only one of the four that's in the CIP is the Glen Lake Activity Center.
It's Glen Lake, okay.
Correct. Yep, and that's included within that skate park project, correct.
Got it.
The other three, and I think Darren and Mike are going to talk more funding options and strategies when we get into the budget discussion. But yeah, the, the CIP just included Glen Lake.
All right. Patty.
So is the Glen Lake Activity Center, is it going to fall over, or is the roof going to cave in, or is anything like, like, we need to get this done, this?
The Glen Lake Activity Center is not going to, it's not going to cave in. You know, right now, we're seeing about, like I mentioned, about 400 hours per year of rental. You know, there's an operating cost to that building. It's anywhere from 12,000 to 15,000. We bring in some dollars in revenue, maybe 3,000 to 4,000. So there's, there's an operational cost to having Glen Lake, but we're not sticking significant dollars in for capital projects, roofs, and things like that. We're, we're operating it. And we had, you know, the people who use that building, it works for them, but people aren't requesting, coming in and requesting that building. It's just not the most attractive space to rent.
So if, if we didn't do anything with the Glen Lake Activity Center right now, could we reallocate that money? That $112,000 or whatever?
I'm going to, I'm looking at Darren just to see how that would work.
I was hoping that was rhetorical.
Right, right.
The question?
No, the look.
Thank you.
What that?
So I, I thought your $124,000 was built into the cost of the whole skate park, which...
Correct.
Does the design include that footprint of that area? I don't, that's what I don't know.
Right. So it feels like you wouldn't want to take that out. I mean, we're kind of scheduling that for the skate park, I guess, and so...
Okay.
And that isn't, you know, we're planning that schedule for 2026, so it's not like years out.
A long way away.
Right.
So just to follow up on that first, is that meaning then that you can't go ahead with the skate park design? It would be hard to do that unless we demo that. You'd have to design it around it otherwise?
Yeah, I think, you know, right now, Matt is looking at options, working with consultants to do that. And I think the plan is to design it without the building.
Okay.
Correct.
That's, that's what I kind of wanted to...
That's based on what we heard last year. I think that was kind of the direction, and so we're planning to design without...
I just wanted to kind of confirm that. And then what is the, do we know what the use of the current skate park is? Do we have any sense of, of usage on that at all?
I...
And is it going to be something like Williston, when you think, when it's updated, they will build it and they will come, sort of thing? Is that the sense?
Yeah, that's what we're hearing. I think the size of our skate park right now, it's about 4,000 square feet, I believe, and it's, it's a pretty small skate park compared to some others. And I think that's what people are looking for, more of a regional-type-sized skate park. So yes, I believe, I don't know the exact numbers of how many people are coming right now, but they, we have been told that if we update features and sizes and, it's, it's just an older style as well.
Sure. Got it. And let's see, for the Marsh, are you kind of projecting the same thing would happen or anticipating the same thing might happen as it did with Williston? Is, you know, once you kind of put some renovation dollars into that, then you would see increased membership? It looks like you went up, you know, at least doubled, if not more, at Williston during that post-2010 period? Are you thinking something similar might happen to the Marsh? Is there capacity for that?
I think that is something we're thinking of, and I do think that. When, when I look back at some of the numbers, and I looked today just to see what Williston, the city bought it in 1995, you know, it was about eight years before the Williston Center broke even. And then for another eight years, it was kind of hovering around break-even before we renovated. And we, when we renovated, we had 1,900 members, and within a couple of years, it was up to 7,000 and 8,000, and then we were, were making dollars and able to put some dollars away for capital. So yes, I think it gives you more opportunities to, once, you know, membership options, program options, I think it would, obviously a large-ticket item, but when you think about operating after, it gives you more options and flexibility.
Yeah, yeah. Especially when you think about, like, what we've just done with the community center, so... For other places are spending. Okay, thank you. I think that was, those were my main questions.
Any other questions, Kevin?
I don't have a question, but I just want to make a comment about the, the way the study was done about the Marsh. I just, the data that we got about the wellness center aspect was so informative and really sort of pointed out for people that might not understand the allure of that particular facility, just how unique it is, anywhere, let alone for a municipal facility. So I just wanted to say, to thank everybody for including that in the packet because it helps sort of inform the type of services that are being provided and what kind of spaces we might need there. And so, you know, it's just helpful as we think about what we might do there, if we do anything.
Right. Anything else? Any other questions? Well, Kelly answered the question that I wanted to raise was, you know, the, the Glen Lake Activity Center really doesn't fit in with our long-term plans, I don't think. But the fact that, you know, it's $12,000 to $15,000 a year to just keep it as is, you do the arithmetic on that, and the cost of demoing is $113,000. I mean, at the, at the current run rate, you know, that's about, that's about eight or nine years. And so then you spent the money and you still have the building to figure out what to do with. And I just think, as unfortunate as it is, I'm, I'm a person who doesn't like to throw things away, but I've spent enough time at the Glen Lake Activity Center, as I, I understand why it is, you know, it's not, we're not getting much rental benefit from it. I mean, it's, it's nice to have storage, but it's, it's a much higher potential piece of property for the city than it's currently providing. So I think that's, the run rate is something to consider as we, as we have to make a decision on that. Because I say, well, gee, that's the last priority, but, but given the fact that it's $13,000 a year we're spending to just kick, kick the can down the road, for lack of better terminology, is, is something that weighs on me pretty, pretty heavily. And, and then given, given the, the skate park and a better, higher alternative use, I, I think those are pretty compelling. So council, other, other comments as we, I mean, the big question here is, do we, do we want to change the priorities? And, and we've got those laid out on page four of the staff report. Rebecca.
You know, answering this question without, like, a, you know, funding stream is almost like, you know, asking Santa for a pony, you know, because do it all, you know?
Right.
I mean, which doesn't seem realistic, but I think from a deliberate standpoint, I, you know, the community center is, I think, it'd be nice to have some kind of sense of, you know, we would anticipate an increase in revenues at this capacity. And I know that's, to a certain extent, asking to look into a crystal ball. The things I'm most concerned about are the usability and from us, from the sense of, you know, the restrooms and this is where the seniors are coming, and it's not ideal for somebody with significant mobility issues or disabilities. And so those things are important to me. I'll just kind of check off the list. Glen Lake, I, from my perspective, we've kind of made the decision on that, and I think, you know, the mayor's spot on. And also, there's no way to make that building desirable. I mean, I hate to throw things away, but sometimes, you know, the underwear has holes in it, and there's nothing you're going to be able to do. So I think we're just about there.
That's kind of nasty.
We're just about there. As far as Williston, I guess, you know, Williston is kind of a, I almost hate to see it get short shrift. You know, I think some of us talked about this right after that joint session with the park board because it is a known commodity. And, you know, it is at maximum capacity, and we can make it a little more comfortable for the people that use it. But I think there maybe are some missed opportunities there. I think you could do a significant draw in lessons and revenue generating with a year-round decent, I mean, the pickleball there's pretty tough now, things like that. So, you know, I hate to put more on the table, but the option, the, you know, adding some space there, to me, is still a little bit on the table. I think the Marsh, we're at a point where, you know, it's going to need significant investment. And we either have to find, you know, determine how we're going to pay for it, whether it's $7 million or $30 million, it's probably going to be either sales tax, if that's ever an option, or bonding. I mean, those seem to be the only options. And I think if we're going to keep it, and I, and I feel like this council's committed to keeping it, then at least option two needs to happen, that investment. I spoke at length with Mike this morning about, you know, understanding maybe the tail on the, what it's going to take to get into the black, because I don't think it's going to be in perpetuity that, you know, it's in the red. I think we're, we're getting very close. We're, we're surpassing our initial projections. And I also, I also think there's, you know, and the mayor had talked about this as well, I think there's a lost opportunity for some structuring fees in a way that maybe requires those folks with means to pay a little bit more, especially with Silver Sneakers and the structure of some of those payments, because there's plenty of people that go there for free, you know? And I, I can go there for free. And you know that they absolutely have the means to pay some kind of, not insignificant, but not like backbreaking.
Williston.
Yeah. Well, I mean, the silver, same situation at Williston, though. You have Silver Sneakers, you can sign up. I mean, it's kind of a weird situation. You could sign up for 20 health clubs on your Silver Sneakers and be classified as a member and not have any skin in the game. You just go where you feel like going.
And, and the revenue is basically a paper swipe thing, so...
Yes. So anyway, that's, that's a whole nother story. But, you know, if we're gonna, I think we have to try to figure out how to move the ball forward or have some kind of plans, or, or, you know, we're going to be facing an emergency with a roof situation or something else, and I'm very worried about that.
Other, yes, Paula?
Yeah, comment question I meant to ask about that, that kind of pro forma statement that was in the packet, I think page 45 or something like that. Anyway, just, you know, what we're, how close are we to that? Because there was something there about needing $300,000. That was from last year. Kind of an update on, on, on that. And then, you know, kind of agree with everything else that has been kind of said. I think it's 45. Let me check. But anyway, 145, sorry.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I haven't looked at that page specifically, but, you know, I think when you're talking about the financials, we are trending towards break-even, for sure.
Okay.
You know, we, we've only had it for two years, of which that first year, we had a lot of one-time, big upfront capital costs. So we really are looking at, you know, a year and a half's worth of data. But yes, we are definitely trending towards that. Like I said, you know, when I look back at Williston, it was about eight years before we broke even. So I think it's, it's a slower trend, but we are trending towards breaking even. Yes, we're seeing more people...
Sounds like even more than, more quickly than Williston.
Correct. Yes.
So I think that's really encouraging.
Tough question, but yes, I mean, it's moving, the numbers from '23 and '24 and early in '25 are looking good.
And then how, how, you know, dicey are we looking at for some of these things, these, you know, potentially catastrophic roof things? I mean, can we limp along, I guess is the question from this year, because last year it was like, yeah, we can limp along.
Yeah. And I think we can. I think it, you know, it would be wonderful if we knew that there was a plan, knew the plan that, you know, in X date, we were going to be doing this, that helps us with operational needs and some of the bigger tickets, you know, decks and roofs and HVAC units and things like that.
Then I guess I'll just finish up with my comments. And I agree that, you know, kind of talking about this without, you know, having some sense of funding mechanisms is, you know, speaking in a vacuum and not only, you know,
sense of funding mechanisms is, you know, speaking in a vacuum and not only, you know, for these facilities, but, you know, kind of the broader discussions of our big ticket items that we have in the budget as well, that go beyond, you know, this, whether it's fire stations or, you know, kind of some of the other things that we have. And, you know, it's hard for me to prioritize any differently. I pretty much am on board with last year's, where we're at last year and kind of doing this, some of the things that council member Shaq brought up. Again, you know, defer, in agreement with you, it's hard to kind of really have a serious discussion about this until we kind of learn some more about local option sales tax and some other, you know, potential options for funding because, yeah.
All right, other comments? Kimberly, there you are. You know, if you'd sit closer to me. Never mind.
So, yeah, I'll go for you. So Glen Lake, I'm pretty much in agreement. I wish, you know, if it didn't cost eight times as much to renovate as it does to tear down, then I might like fight harder to keep it. But it just doesn't make sense to keep it. So I would say, yes, I'm still in agreement on that. The Marsh, so like everyone else, when I looked at, unless we identify a funding source, I'm not sure I'm still on board with, with option two. I think definitely we need to replace the roof and do some of these structural things that unfortunately, no one's gonna see. But, and, you know, maybe put some new flooring in the locker rooms because the carpet is tragic. But again, like, so I guess I would, I would lean more towards option one, but agreed option two, if we could find, if we could work out funding. And, yeah, I'm, just agree with, with Rebecca on the community center and Williston.
Other comments?
Just, just quickly, I totally agree about Glen Lake Activity Center. I just think it has passed its useful life. I think we discussed, I think we came to an agreement a long time ago on that. I think, you know, in addition to not understanding the funding source, I just think the economic uncertainty with sort of everything that's going on at the federal and state level just adds complexity to making decisions, because it's not just spending the money and, you know, like finding a funding source, it's that we don't know what condition our taxpayers are gonna be in. You know, are we gonna go into a recession? Are, are we gonna be looking to make sure, you know, they can keep a roof over their heads and food in their mouths? Or, or the ops? I mean, it's just so uncertain. So that makes me, you know, it's just very hard to make these kinds of decisions. But I think everyone, I think the other thing is, there are really good options. I, what I'm hoping is that we can maybe, say with the Marsh, I think that there are some things like the roof or whatever that are, you know, I really don't want to defer them until we do have a bigger problem. But I also wonder if we can just make a plan to phase in instead of, you know, pick, pick things that, that are going to be meaningful and visible to people that will help generate revenue and, you know, get people in the door. You know, maybe it's renovating some of the meeting spaces because those are rentable and those would be revenue generating and sort of, and also, you know, safety things or like hygienic things like in, in the locker rooms or whatever. And then start picking away at some of the bigger things. I'm just wondering if we can figure out a way to do sort of à la carte and just keep on building on it as we, or if it's better to just rip the Band-Aid off and just like, you know, do it all. It's hard to know. So, sorry, I'm a little wishy-washy, but those are the things that are going through my mind and I agree with Rebecca. I don't want to give Williston short shrift and I'm just trying to keep an open mind. I'm, I'm kind of in a sweet spot with the decisions that we made before, but I just think everything's too uncertain to be rigid.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much, like, looking over the budget and the kind of taxes and revenue and expenditures, it just overwhelmed me and it made me, and I felt the same way. Like, this is, this is a different year. I mean, last year, we made all these decisions about Glen Lake Community Center, but we didn't see what was coming. We didn't know. And that's my, my reaction was, we have to make, we have to do everything we can to be stewards of the taxes that we don't really, we can't, you know, the future is scary, at the very least. And my, that, my concern, that's my, that's, I'm just reacting to, you know, what, what can we do to make sure that, that, you know, because costs are going up, you know, the revenue from businesses is going down. I mean, it just didn't, it just looked like, you know, trouble. And I just really want to make sure that, you know, we don't back ourselves into a corner or dare ourselves a hole that we can't get out of.
Is there another question?
Paula?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just one more quick, I guess, question is that, I'm assuming this is kind of, maybe this is like the budget kickoff, like we, we don't have to make final decisions tonight on any of this, this stuff that, you know, in principle, we can kind of keep this as our, our template, maybe do a few other things like looking at, and at the phased-in issues and then just kind of keep going forward with, you know, like generally, we're here, but we're kind of maybe teasing out a few more of, you know, the possibilities in terms of maybe, you know, like the à la carte. The only thing I'll say about the Marsh is, the only thing I remember is that we have an aging population in Minnetoka unless that trend reverses. So we're looking at more and more 55-plus folks in the community. So, you know, I don't want to give short shrift to Williston, but I also want to make sure that, you know, we're kind of providing facilities that kind of serve everybody, so.
Just a quick statement that, and I'm sure this applies to everyone, but, and I imagine we'll talk about it more when we get into the budget, but part of my thinking on all of this is that we had a, the, the presentation from the fire department on the, the fire stations that we need, that we're gonna need to renovate or move or rebuild. And, you know, when we're looking at priorities, I've got to put fire safety above a nicer-looking recreation facility. So that's part of my, my reticence to, to spend money or to, what's the word I'm looking for? Allocate, promise.
Resources, yeah.
Resources for that when we, when we've got these other needs that are also very important.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? Because I've got a few. You know, so, you know, I think we did a pretty good job in 2024 of laying out priorities and I don't think the priorities changed that much. However, I, I think the point that Kimberly just made is, is really relevant. We, I think we are entering a period where we are going to need to focus on austerity to the degree possible. And that doesn't mean we stop doing everything. It means that, okay, you know, what are, what are prudent least-cost options? Is kind of the way I, I pose it. And so, you know, the Glen Lake, I mean, the Glen Lake Community Center, you know, the, the low-cost option is, is demolition. And over time, that, that makes sense. I mean, I, we should do that sooner rather than later because let's, let's get the cost on, off the books. The community center, I really feel, is, is my second priority because it's such an important part of our community. It gets the attention. We bought the Marsh kind of on the back of the, the renovation of the, of the community center. And I think that as we look at our facilities, redoing the community senator, center will make that more vital and, and that will help our revenue and, but, you know, let's not act like we're gonna make money on it, but we're, it will help cover the costs. And I, and I think that's, you know, if, if I were only gonna do two things, those would be the, the only two things I would do initially. But, you know, as I look at Williston, I probably would do as little as possible with Williston. Part of my rationale is, you know, Williston is what it is. That building is never going to be the best building it could be. It's not gonna, it's not gonna win awards for being the best community center in the, in the metro. I kind of term it, it's a rather proletarian place. I mean, it's not fancy, it's, but it's functional. And, and the other thing is, it's not that, I mean, it was renovated, I mean, the difference between what it was before the renovation and it is vast. And, you know, it's got 10,000 members. If it were that bad, it would be back down to 2,000. And so, you know, I'm not a believer that you, you put things off until, you know, the place is falling apart. But, you know, we designed it with, to use what we, what we had to use. That is a highly constrained space.
Right, yeah.
And, you know, it kind of begs the question, are further renovations for Williston, other than, other than taking care of the cosmetics and, and making sure everything's working? You know, are we better off saying, you know what, we're gonna, this, this place has a shelf life of X, we're gonna keep it running? And then if we're really serious about being a Class A community, we're gonna have, are we gonna have to come up, come over and build something, you know, be by rink A or rink B or some, I mean, just start with a blank sheet of paper like a lot of other cities are doing? You know, I think if we keep adding on and trying to squeeze and cut into the hill and we're doing a lot of expensive things that don't solve the fundamental problems that, you know, this isn't, this isn't a great building. It's the building we've got. And so, you know, I think we should maybe take a step back and look at more expansively for the long term, make it as good as we can with what we've got. But we, we could make all sorts of improvements to Williston and it would never be a great community center. It would be an adequate community center for Minnetoka. And so we have to kind of think through what do we want? And that's beyond the scope of what the facility study said. But I think, you know, let's look at things expansively. Let's not act like the only option we have is to up, to renovate what we've got. We've got some not ideal buildings, just like the, just like the Glen Lake Activity Center. It's not an act, you know, it's time to tear that one down. You know, maybe 10 years from now, it's gonna be time to tear Williston down too and start over. So let's not throw too much money at that one. Let's be realistic about that. And then, you know, I don't think we're in the same place with the Marsh. Now, everyone will accuse me of, well, you know, you were a strong proponent of the Marsh and you're biased and, you know, there's some truth to that. But, but I think that I would, I would, my preference with the Marsh would be to do, to refresh the Marsh. I just think we're in a period where austerity is gonna be necessary. Let's, let's refresh the Marsh. Let's get rid of a lot of the carpeting in there. My wife, my wife mentions that to me frequently and she doesn't even go to the Marsh. And, but, you know, we've got carpeting in, in locker rooms, we've got carpeting in activity rooms. Probably not, you know, probably if we were doing it over again, we probably wouldn't choose carpeting. But, but, you know, I think, I think we have to kind of go with the low-cost options. And, and I would put Williston, you know, we didn't up, we didn't renovate Williston that long ago. And if, why was that plan okay then and not now? Is kind of my rhetorical question. So, so I would prioritize, you know, we, Glen Lake is done. We've got the money in the CIP for, for other reasons. The community center, I think, should be the, should get the primary attention. I think the Marsh should be upgraded. But I would go with, I agree with, with Kimberly. I think option one for the Marsh, given the change in our financial outlook, '25 versus '24, we're gonna have to make some tough decisions. I would prioritize that way. And then I would say, you know what? Let's, let's do as little as we can with Williston and take another look in five years would be kind of my recommendation. Very austere, cheap, I mean, as cheap as we can go plan, but I, those are my priorities. So a few thoughts. Now, you heard from different things from different people, you'd like a little bit more consensus on that. So I don't know, council, what do you think of the various options we've kicked around?
And Brad, if I maybe could, maybe just, maybe say a couple of things before we continue. One, again, what we tried to do this evening is, with this first part of tonight's conversation is, as Kelly and, as already mentioned, Sarah's already mentioned, just a refresh. And so part of, I think a lot of comments you're getting into now, I would encourage you to hold off on that.
Okay.
As we get into the next part of the presentation, some of this may become clear for you, because we do have some slides that are coming up that really kind of dive a little deeper in, into this.
Okay, good.
Really kind of the nature of this question was, all things considered equal, if money kind of wasn't the option, kind of reaffirming, reaffirming where you are. Our next kind of step in this discussion is to go a little deeper.
Well, let's answer that question. Let's answer that. Just quick, did we like where we were? I mean, what does everyone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I thought we made good decisions.
Yeah, if money was taken off the table, bang.
If we had the money, let's do this.
We didn't know that.
If it was no option, I would like to look at your option.
You should have told us.
That's what I thought about a lot. It's that we've got three different buildings here that we're upkeep, you know, doing upkeep on, whereas, you know, what we would be better looking long-term is enlarging this building and trying to encompass at least the functions of, of community center and Williston here in the long-term. I think that's, but, you know.
I'm not signing up for throwing anything away yet, but I think.
No, long, long-term.
Okay.
I don't know, are we helping you? We're not trying to.
Does that help?
So if I re, so maybe I think from a staff perspective, I reframe the question, if money was no object.
Yeah.
And where are you, are you similar to where you are today as you were a year ago? I think.
I mean, if money was no option, I'd be all in even with the pavilion, but money's an option, is, is definitely a problem.
Yeah. And absolutely, I think, and not to, not to diminish anything about what we're seeing with the economy and our ability to watch over and be stewards of taxpayer money, I think really what we wanted to get a sense from you was, are these still kind of the priorities? I hear for the most part, yes, with copy ads, of course. I think as we get into the next, next part of the discussion, we'll start to flush out a little bit of this. And I think it'll, that will be, I think, an opportunity for you to then maybe repeat some of the things you've just said under a different set of.
Conditions.
Conditions. Because I think as we, as De'ron and I want to do is now start to walk you through some of the budget conditions, some of the considerations for funding sources. Lay out some options and talk about what that could look like. Then I think it might become clear in that conversation where your priorities land. I think you've already said them here, but I would maybe to short-circuit that conversation for now as we kind of get, as we get into the other parts of our, of our presentation this evening.
All right. So, thanks, Mike. So council, that's kind of, on this item, that's a speak now or forever hold your peace. Is there anyone with any additions to what's been said before we move on to the next part?
I loved all the comments. I think you make some good points, Mayor.
This has been extremely helpful. And, you know, I think as, if I can and start to now transition, you let me know when you're ready to transition and we'll transition, Mayor.
Well, I think I'm ready. The, the only other thing I would like, and I don't want to cause staff too much heartburn, but we are two years into the Marsh and I would appreciate kind of a high-level financial review of where we are from a revenue and expense perspective. We're doing better than we originally projected, but I, I really haven't seen any pro formas or perform, you know, two years in, maybe a financial report on where our money's coming from, you know, what are the sources of revenue? How does that compare with our costs? Based on, you know, a reasonable projection, when we, would we anticipate getting to that breakeven point? Ideas you have for speeding that up or, you know, staff professional judgment on, you know, where we stand on the financial performance of the Marsh? I think that would benefit us in terms of making good decisions as we look forward. So I throw that out as a request.
And, sorry, Mayor, that, this was sent to the council in a Friday update a couple months ago. So we get an unaudited financial pro forma.
Yeah.
So it was in a Friday update, we can resend that to the council.
Well, I can find it too, but, but, yeah, I think, I mean, I think that's, I think that's important, you know, and worth, worth a conversation at some point.
So, and that is, so we, with, with our budget process and we'll cover the timelines coming up. So with the Marsh, yes, well, we can resend the performance, that way you see it.
Yeah.
Because we do have, it's unaudited. And so we want to make sure we got those numbers to you before the audit was complete.
Yeah.
Because the audit doesn't come to you until June.
June.
So we get into June before you get the true audited numbers, but we want to give you unaudited numbers. So I think we sent that out to you in February, in a, in a Friday update, where we send that to you. And then looking forward, the rest of the year, you will have the audited numbers coming up in June on the Marsh. And then later in the year, when we get into the special revenue accounts, special revenue, like we'll have the Marsh and we'll have Glen Lake, correct, not excuse me, Glen Lake, we'll have Marsh, ice rinks, we'll have Marina, so all that comes to you later this year. But yes, we'll, we want to make sure we get that covered, absolutely.
All right, thank you. Anything else, council? Okay, we'll call this a transition time.
Sounds good. Thank you, thank you, Brad. And so I think that part of the segue into this piece of then is our budget kickoff. And this is something that we started, as you know, a couple of years ago. I think before we did the budget kickoff, your first look at the budget was usually in June or August, it's usually a couple of months later. But we did this as a way for you to provide feedback to staff before we got deep But we did this as a way for you to provide feedback to staff before we got deeper into the budget. So, tonight, it's laid out a little differently from probably the last two years that you've seen, because really, I think I had mentioned this to all of you on the phone, as we spoke, is that we're in a period of time where we've got a lot of capital needs, in the sense of our facilities. Again, you heard from Chief Fox and the Assistant Chiefs at our last study session about our fire stations, stations two, three, four, five. We've now got to refresh tonight on the rec facility needs and OPUS. And so, when you look at all of those needs, and we've got a couple of slides coming up on that, because really, this is a, it's a long-term planning exercise. And I think, I think Council member, Remaley mentioned earlier, there's no final decisions tonight, or are there decisions being finalized tonight? No, this is, this is the beginning of long-term planning. So, that's how I'd like to tee it up, is thinking about long-term planning as it relates to these facilities, because there's a lot of dollars on the table, you as a council and we as staff, working as a team on looking at, what is our long-term strategy in terms of these facilities? How will they get funded? When they could get funded? What are the impacts of the different funding mechanisms? We're gonna start walking through that tonight. So, tonight, we think of it as the beginning, chapter one of the book, and throughout this year, as we continue to pull a lot of numbers together, these will probably all change from conversation to conversation. So, just keep that in mind, this is a really fluid conversation. So, appreciate all the comments to this point. Just as we move into the next slide, just hit the clicker. Thank you, Darren. So, discussion questions that we teed up for you, and really kind of think about these, because we'll ask you these at the end. The first question, does the Council have priorities to be considered for 2026, including but not limited to operations, programming, and capital improvements? So, that first question, set the facilities aside, because that's in question three. And so, as we get into really the, the heart and soul of our tax levy, as you know, they are, there are three funding sources for our tax levy. It's capital, debt, and operations. And so, capital, debt, operations. So, when you think about capital, debt, and operations, are there any priorities that you want us to be considered, or you want considered for 2026? Question two is, from the community and business survey results, are there any matters that should be considered in the 2026 budget? Really, and we included those in your packet, so you did have those community survey results, the business survey results, now's a good time to revisit those. And if there's anything in those results that should be considered in our budgeting process, we'd want to understand that this evening. And then third, really, this is then the segue from earlier conversation on regarding facility improvements. Are there specific projects the city should consider as the highest priority? If yes, are there preferred, preferred financing methods, timeframes, or other prioritization that should be considered? So, you'll get a sense of that as we lay out these slides to help answer question three, where we start to again flush that out in this process. And the way I would describe the budget process is, we start out here wide, right? We start out wide, we're painting a broader brush tonight, and then with every discussion, every study session coming up, we keep filtering it down to get to kind of that final, that final place. So, really kind of approach tonight is, again, your first, your first discussion on it, and things you might say today might change at the next meeting or the next conversation, just depending on new information that comes forward. Because with the budget process, it's a lot of numbers, there's a lot of spreadsheets, a lot of moving parts, as we pull all this together in this process. So, with that, Darren and I will tag-team this a little bit. So, you'll see us bouncing back and forth between the slides with that. Darren, you want to start us off with the timeline?
Yep, absolutely. With me, Mayor, Council members. Just want to reiterate, this is something you've seen multiple times on that end, but just kind of went over the quickly, the timeline of where we're at. This is the kind of the official kickoff that we've had these up until this point already, that kind of kicked off the question already. So, we had directed presentations back in March, which aren't on this. We have a community and business survey a couple of weeks ago on that end of it. Well, the CIP study session coming up here in June, so we're seeing that prepared, giving that a good spot. And then, we'll have, in August, we'll have a study session specifically related to the operating, operational side of things, general fund, tax levy, those types of things. So, all our discussion here tonight, CIP, all helps kind of size that to kind of narrow it down as we kind of funnel things into the year on that end of it. And then we go on to September is when we approve the preliminary levy, and we work on the detailed line items after that. And then, in November, we'll have another study session to talk about enterprise funds, some of our utilities, those types of things, and review of the, the full draft budget at that point in time before approval in December at that point in time. So, it's a year-long process, it seems like, so. So, looking at the, the strategic plan, and as it relates to the budget, one of our strategic priorities is financial strength. And so, there are three desired outcomes with that strategic priority. And the first one is to improve alignment between service expenditures and identified priorities. And that really relates to, we talked about program budget, and really just trying to come, identify the programs and priorities that are helping lift the strategic plan as we, as we kind of, over these next three years on that end of it, such, and really focus our efforts on those items that are driving the strategic plan. Our second item, desired outcome there is to expand services of revenue for the capital improvement projects. Obviously, we've talked about lots of projects tonight, looking for revenue sources there. We've been hitting grants really heavy the last number of years on that end of it as well, too. That helps both the capital and the operational side of things as well there, too. And then, our third one is the high-level creditworthiness, which, end of the budget, kind of obviously steers that as well, too. And so, one of our action steps under high-level creditworthiness is to maintain Moody's fund balance, is there, our action step is, we always want to kind of maintain that triple-A bond rating. And so, our action step is to maintain Moody's fund balance rating up very strong. And so, in order to do that, Moody's has, I was looking at it today, they have about a 75-page document on how to, on how the, all their credit scoring really relates and such like that. And so, we have bits and pieces of that, and we can impact some of it. Some of it is out of our control, so there are kind of three, three areas, three or four areas that Moody's looked at when they're doing your rating. So, they look at your financial performance, so that's 30% of your rating. They look at the economy, and that's another 30% of your rating. And those are items that are kind of out of our, out of our control. So, that's resident income, full value per capita, economic growth, those types of things that are, we have a little bit of control on that, but generally, it's just how healthy is your, how healthy is your local economy on that end of it. And then we look at institutional framework, which is a kind of a 10% piece, and that is really related to just the nature of your operations. Are we able to levy dollars without restrictions per se? So, do we have state-imposed levy restrictions in place? Certainly, we do not. So, we have a little bit more flexibility than, say, years or institutions that are restricted by other outside agencies on, on that end of it and such like that. So, we're sitting in a good spot on that end of it. And the fourth piece there is the leverage piece of it, and that really relates back to, where are our fund balance levels at? How much are we able to leverage those dollars to help, help our expenditures through the next year on that end of it and such like that? So, a number of things that go into it, and we do have a few things in Invisio as well, too. We have some charts and graphs as well, too. I'll just quickly go into those, just to give you a quick overview of some of the metrics that kind of help us kind of track that, make sure that we're reaching our desired outcome of maintaining that triple-A bond rating. And this is a little bit small, kind of small, very small. So, the upper, the upper left one is the net governmental fund balance percentages of revenue.
[inaudible]
Oh, like each one of them, right? Is that right?
Yeah.
So, right here?
Yep.
So, I'll just quickly go through each one of these, it's a little better, the font can change, but the chart got bigger. So, this is the, our net governmental fund balance percentage of our revenues. This measures how much, where our revenues are at compared to our fund balance. And so, we are sitting at like 145%. Anything greater than 30% is very strong. And so, we have solid fund balances across our organization. So, we're really sitting in a strong position. Part of that is due to, we have our community investment fund that we've had for many, many years on that end of it, that we utilize to pay for public improvements throughout the years on that end of it. That's got a balance in there of $20 million or so. And that is, really shows up as governmental fund balance, as available to cash. You're asking me if somebody would come to fruition on that. So, Moody's looks at that and says, there's an extra $20 million that most cities don't necessarily have. So, that helps us with that percentage on that end of it and such. How do I give back then?
[inaudible]
Our taxable market value, we've seen that in, in the assessment report as well, too. That's, I can't read those numbers whatsoever from here. So, but it is, obviously, it's trending in the right direction. And this is just through 2023, don't have 2024 and 2025 numbers in here loaded yet. We'll get those loaded for the second quarter Invisio reports on, on that end of it. So, this is probably that year that we saw the big increases a few years ago with residential markets on, on that end of it and such. And then, net direct debt as percentage of taxable market value, so we have really very little net direct debt. And so, that mainly the item looked at here would probably be our public safety facility bond, because that was just a general GO bond supported by property taxes. Doesn't take into consideration our water and sewer utility bonds that are supported mainly by user fees, or primarily by user fees and backed by the, the GO piece of that. But, so basically, we have that, that bond there, and then we have a little bit left on a park and, park improvement bond from 2015, 2016 that we issued on that end of it. And there again, here's our net direct debt, is that, that 28 million, that's basically that public safety facility and that small park improvement bond, so.
Darren, you want to go to the net, the net direct debt?
This one?
Up the other one, to go up. And, and so, why, why, this is an important graph, because as we, again, we talk about debt service, and we take a look at the city's debt, and how Moody's looks at our debt, and how that's considering to our financial strength. The reason we point this out, too, there's, there's a target line, that red line, and you want to be under that. So, the point of showing this is that, as Darren mentioned, you have, we have very little debt as a city, in terms of general obligation debt. It really goes back to our public safety facilities. So, as now, think about our conversations we've had and will come up regarding facilities, we have capacity, we have ability to take on debt. Not that we need to or should, but just really making your, making sure that you're aware of that from a data standpoint. We have ability to issue debt without negatively impacting our bond rating or the city's fiscal health.
Yeah, absolutely. All right.
Just a quick question for clarity. So, let's, let's blow that one back up again. So, the dotted line pertains, the red dotted line pertains to the green line here. So, we're below that. So, then, the fact that the blue line is really just, the, the red line has nothing to do with the blue line, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
It can't over, it over, yes, good question, Brad, that it overlays the previous graph that Darren had pulled up
Yeah.
On our taxable market value, and how that relates to your current debt. And there's a ratio in there.
Yeah.
So, it's showing the, the tax, the blue line is the taxable market value, the green line is the debt, and then you get this ratio. And so, the ratio is where you want to be underneath that, which is that green line.
Right.
The green line represents the ratio.
Yeah.
So, even if your blue line, say your blue line stayed flat or went negative, that green line would then go inversely, the opposite direction.
Right.
We'd get up closer to the, go towards the red line on that end of it, so.
Right. My mind just goes to, gee, why are we above the red line? That's where my mind goes, that's where I, I wanted to clarify that, that issue.
Very good question.
I appreciate it.
We're.
The higher the blue line goes, the better.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. So, again, part of us showing you these, this data is to, I know, we talked about budgets are always hard, but yet, it's, but also just make sure that you're also understanding the fuller breadth of the picture, and that is, financial health is important to the city, and we are in a good position. So, we're still very good, in a great position as a city, given, even all the challenges we talked about.
Yeah, yeah, very good.
So, another part of that strategic plan on the, the financial strength is kind of our grant tracker spreadsheet that we've kind of worked on, and Sarissa's built over the last number of months on that end of it as well, too. So, she'll give a little brief overview of that one as well, and some of how those grants, both operationally and capital, have impacted for the better of us on, on that end of it.
So, this is the same dashboard you saw a couple of months ago, but we did filter it to only show grants that are occurring in 2024 and 2025. So, grants by status, we've been awarded 18, two are pending that have been submitted, and eight were denied. And you can see it filtered by department. Obviously, police has quite a few, and so does Public Works for 2024, and same for 2025. This is in dollar amounts, you can see the total that we have been awarded, the city match awarded, and then the combined total between those two. And this includes all of them, including the ones that were submitted and denied. And if you keep going down, you can see different type of revenue sources, so federal funding, state funding, local, private slash nonprofit. This shows how it applies to the strategic plan. So, financial strength, there's none. Safe and healthy community, there's quite a few, especially in 2024. Infrastructure asset management, livable, livable and well-planned development, sustainability, and then community inclusiveness. And then, this is a new area we added. So, within our 2024 and 2025 grants, staff selected whether those grants are at high risk for funding, moderate risk, or low risk. So, these are the, so we don't have any in the high-risk category, we have some in moderate risk and low risk. And those are the numbers that affected, and this is the number of grants. And if you keep going down, this shows all those grants by the line items. Are there specific questions? Darren, do you want to add anything?
No, I think that, I mean, this is great, it shows kind of directly how it relates to our strategic plan on that end of it. We got a lot of, a good mix of operating and capital pieces of it. Police departments got a, you know, has a lot of patrol pieces of that, DWI enforcement, those types of things that have helped, you know, impact our public safety plan implementation. Capital pieces of it with the streets and, and things like that, with the trail funding, trail expansion, that type of thing, that really helped, the Scraps Road Trail, that remembers those dollars greatly on that one. I wish every trail could be that, that way. But, it's a good, it's a good overview of kind of seeing what, the positive impact that grants have had, and hopefully, we are minimizing our risk moving forward as well, too, with both the state and federal level on, on that end of it, with budgets up in the air, so.
We, we don't hold it against you, Darren, that there's no finance. I can't imagine the grants out there for, yeah.
I was just wondering, what the risk factors, when I say risk, high risk, moderate risk, low risk, what goes into that calculation?
So, we kind of asked each, each department, each area that, about their grants specifically, what they're hearing, what they're seeing, what they know about, what are those risk factors? And they.
In terms of whether it's gonna happen or not?
Yeah, whether or not they're either, you know, if they're gonna get pulled, or if they're gonna get awarded, or if they're, you know, what the status of that is. So, there isn't necessarily any certain criteria, other than I think it's more of a feel from each of those grants.
So, does that take, sorry, just to follow, does that take into account, like, federal grants that might trickle, like, state funding that relies on federal funding first, that does also take that into consideration?
Right, absolutely. So, we get, a lot of our federal funding, absolutely, absolutely comes through the state level first on that.
Yeah, like, especially transportation, right?
Right.
Okay, so none of our transportation.
Yeah, so we would have talked to engineering and public works about, about those, and they would have had better insight as to whether, what category they would place it.
Because I remember Chief Fox saying something about firefighting, training, federal grant at risk, but happy to see that that was actually reinstated over the weekend. The administration announced that, so that was, I don't know if that would came into this at all, but it was kind of a bit of good news. I heard it, and I was like, oh, good. You know, our firefighters are gonna be able to train again, and those grants have been reinstated.
Absolutely.
And I, yeah, not that, I think Darren, Darren answered it very well, and so did Sarissa. First, I just back up and say, Sarissa's done a really nice job working with our directors to really pull this together. We continue to refine it. Again, as Darren mentioned, this is one of our strategic outcomes, is to look at other revenue sources. And it is, it is frankly a bit subjective
Yeah.
In terms of how we're looking at the high, medium, and low-risk factors. Subjective in the sense of, our directors looked at, right, do we, can we apply for this grant? Are we eligible for this grant? Was it a grant funding that was available last year? Now it's no longer available. So, it, it's just kind of, again, kind of subjective in terms of where we look at, where we can apply grants, and really kind of using our best estimate on how risky it is at this point. Because we're getting asked, I know, you're asking us as staff, do we have risks on federal grants and state grants? This kind of tells us that. This kind of tells us that. Like, the League of Minnesota Cities has reached out to cities, asking if they want to know how cities are being impacted. I think from what I've got here, you're seeing here pretty minimally right now, based on what's happening at the federal and state level. Not without some risk, but certainly nothing much in the high-risk categories.
And if you don't mind, I have a related risk, because over the last several years, we've, to different degrees, we've heard about, I believe it's a federal grant, the Saver Grant, you know, for firefighters. And we talk less about that these days, and we know that we didn't receive the grant for a couple of years in a row. But I don't think it's, you know, one, I don't even know if the Saver Grant is on this list. And if it is, where did we, where would it be categorized? Because to me, based on the experience we've had, it's, we know communities in our state, in our region, that have been granted the Saver Grant, but it also looks like it's a big grant with, that seems to be a pretty long putt for us, for whatever reasons. So would we consider that high risk, or medium risk, or low risk? Chief Fox?
Yeah, so the last two years, we did apply for Saver. We did apply for it this year again, but it didn't open.
Okay.
We're still, that's one of the ones impacted at the federal level. We're unsure if it is going to open this year, but the grant's been written, and it's ready to be submitted, should it open. As we've moved through the public safety master plan, we continue to alter what we asked for in the grant. I think the last two years, we were, the first year we asked for 16, last year we asked for 12. The one we filled out for this year is for nine. And we're pretty much in limbo right now until we figure out if we're going to open it this year or not. But it's still one of our high priority ones.
Yeah, well, thanks very much for that.
One quick question, Fitz, all right?
Yep.
And the ones that are identified are grants that have been, we've received, but were questioned. So if they're on that for high, medium, or no risk, low risk, it's money that we did receive, were awarded, haven't maybe received yet, and wanted to know, are we going to lose it? Is that right?
I guess it depends on who the staff inserted.
It depends on who the staff filled out.
Oh, okay.
I think we can take a look.
I don't know that we, I don't know if I want to go record stating that we have any grants that are going to be necessarily taken away. I don't know that we're going to get a lot that are in those kind of high-risk categories that way. I think a lot of them that are awarded are, they're awarded, meaning that we should, high probability of receiving those funds. And we, we always do our grants basically on a reimbursement basis anyway. So if we'd have to incur the expense and then not get awarded, the money would be not good on that end of it. So I don't know that we have much in that. And that category might be more so on funding, like, say we have a grant this year, maybe it doesn't go next year, something to that nature on that end of it. So it might be an operational, something that's in place, similar to the firefighting, training, or something to that nature, where we've been getting it routinely, and now all of a sudden, that routine stops. That might be more so the risk of some of those dollars there.
Thank you. Anything else? All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Moving on. So really, kind of, you see these first slides are more setting some foundational aspects of tonight's conversation, or continued conversation. Just to recap where we are this year, so 2025. I always start off in the middle with where taxes go. And property taxes, again, go one of three places, or one, two, or three places. It's capital, it's operations, and it's debt. Again, those are our three buckets, if you will, where we levy for taxes. With property taxes in 2025, this year, going to this year, so rewind the clock to December of 2024. The levy that was approved was 7.23%. Breaking that down, skip over general operations and start with the public safety master plan. So we have a five-year strategy in place for public safety for 2025. That was 2.25%, and then for operations, it was 4.98%. So really, when you look at our levy, it fell really within operations and then the public safety investment. General fund operations, we'll kind of go through what that looks like. A lot of it was really what we call business as usual. Like, it was really funding salaries, benefits. We certainly had some unfunded mandates in that. There were really no new programming added in 2025. And again, we'll touch on, and Darren's going to touch on in the coming slides, what 2026 is going to look like potentially today, and then our outlier years. When you break down, then that left-hand side, when you look at the pie graph, we break down those three components. 78% of our levy is dedicated to operations, 18% for capital, and then 4% for debt. On the lower right-hand side, just to put everything in the context, 1% of our levy represents $514,000. So contextualize that, again, as we move through the levy, of what 1% represents, again, is about that $514,000. As I, I'm going to hand it over to Darren in these next couple of slides. And really, to me, this is the, kind of really the backbone of what we're doing. And that is our financial management plan. Proceed to the next slide, Darren. It's our, well, it's our financial management plan, which Darren is going to talk about in the next couple of slides. Really spending a lot of emphasis on these three buckets. I know this isn't your packet, it's a large spreadsheet, a lot of numbers. And really, what Darren and our team is doing is taking a look at all of those moving pieces related to capital, operations, and debt. We do some forecasting, we make some assumptions in all of that, and really try to then estimate what the future years look like. Again, it's not an exact science, but based on experience, based on how we, on how we do these projections, it's painted a pretty accurate picture. And again, we'll, we'll take a look at that as well. So I really wanted to say, appreciate Darren and our team's efforts as we look at, really, the long-term financial health, if you will, of the city, our long-term needs of the city. And going back to one of the questions that we teed up at the beginning, question three, is where does then facilities fit into all of this? And that's all coming up. So that, Darren, you want to talk a little bit about what's in the financial management plan? What's in our budget, what's not included? And we'll, again, continue to go from there and build.
Yeah, absolutely. And so the next slide after this, we're going to go through that financial management plan that was in the, in your council packet. And I know that's confusing to look at, and there's a lot of information on there, lots of numbers, lots of lines, colors, all nine yards. We'll kind of go through it and try to hopefully break it down and make it somewhat easier to kind of understand and simplify on that end of it. But we do look at this, me and Joel look at this on a daily basis. We kind of dream about it sometimes.
Lucky you.
Yeah, lucky us, yeah. And so when we look at this, there are a number of items that go into this. Obviously, we're looking at our revenues, and we'll do a deep dive. And so this is preliminary. So this changes, this plan changes on a day-to-day, hour-to-hour basis on that end of it. So we're looking at, we're looking at May 12th, and we haven't done a true deep dive into our revenue estimates for 2026 yet. We're just kind of going off on historical numbers at this point. Anything that we know from trends-wise, that we're going to see happen on the revenue side of things, until we get directors and other staff looking at really in depth what's going to happen there. So we make other assumptions on personnel. We know kind of historically what's happened there. And then we will also look at the capital forecast as well, too. We're working on the CIPs, and so we're kind of massaging all these numbers to try and make things kind of fit and feel like there's a comfortable number there that I feel somewhat comfortable with, bringing forward at this point in time, such like that. And so when we get to the levy projections, we have one-time costs that are going to be in this financial management plan, specifically the public safety operational side of things. Nothing to do with capital for public facilities, or public safety facilities, or recreational facilities at this point in time, too. So so we'll kind of take some time to go through this. And really, we kind of focus, I'll just go quickly across the top columns here, just to give you what's there. So 2024 is actual. So that's as of kind of the first part of May here, as the financial statements are still being finalized for our audit. But that's as close as I think we're probably going to get at this point in time. And the 2025 budget is what was approved last December. And then we're looking at 2026 is the proposed column that we kind of focus on, along with looking out at the next four years, '27 through '29, and trying to make sure that things stay somewhat level. We don't like to see big spikes in the levy from one year to the next on that end of it. We like to try to moderate things. That has kind of been a goal of ours, and we try to stay true to that. And so when we focus on the 2026 column, and we go down across the top here. So this is the general fund, this first two-thirds of this page, or three-quarters of this page, this really general fund. And the top half here is property taxes. So we, or the top half is the revenues, I should say. And the first line is property taxes. So there's $45 million, I can't click on it. $45 million, $45,500,000 is property taxes for the general fund. And that's really a calculation that gets plugged in there based off of our other revenues and our expenditure estimates at this point in time. Our other revenues in there are license improvements, and our governmental revenue, which would include a lot of our grants, transfers, other revenue, which would be interest revenue, recreation, recreation fees, charges for services, all those types of things go into that revenue estimate. And then we have our expenditures following it down through this, based off of programmatic areas. So general services, public safety, public works, community development, those types of things on that end of it. And those are really kind of built upon. At this point in time, basically inflationary escalations based off the 2025 budget at this point in times. Assuming everything stays the same, we would assume that there's going to be increases in personnel. We're 75%, we're a service organization, 75% of our cost of personnel. We're likely going to see increases in wages and in health insurance, those types of things on that end of it. So that's where we're building the expenditure side of it. We have some capital transfers out. And so if you remember last year's budget, we talked about our surplus available in the general fund that we were able to transfer out to the other capital funds that was diminishing, that we didn't have a whole lot left of excess funds there. 2024 ended up being a pretty, a really good year on that end of it. We had some really good building permit revenues, other revenues, we had really good as well. We had some investment interests, numbers were up, those types of things. Our expenditures came in at or below budget on that end of it. So we ended up having a positive fund balance there that allowed us to now allocate excess fund balance from 2024 out through 2026 through 2028-ish, I think I have, or even 2029 at this point in time. So that helped kind of massage those levies in the out years, especially for 2026 and 2027 on that end of it. So as you can see, for 2026, we're estimating $2.5 million. And if I look back at last year, I bet we only had half a million dollars, maybe, or three-quarters, $750,000 in that line item. So that's helped reduce the 2026 levy directly at this point in time. And so you can see, if I skip over here to the '24 column, you can see that we have, at the end of '24, we're going to have 48.8% fund balance, which means our expenditures for next year, we have enough revenues to cover 48.8% of those. And so anything over 40%, we can allocate then out to the future years for one-time projects, which are in our capital CIP type of items on that end of it.
Can you remind us what that kind of goal percentages were?
So we would like to stay right around, it's 30 to 50% is kind of your goal for a fund balance. I don't have the policy right offhand, but I know that that's usually the range. It's 35 to, 30 to, 30% to 45%, 50%, somewhere in that ballpark. And so that 40% is kind of that sweet spot where we want to kind of target to be at, because then we don't necessarily have any excess to transfer to other funds, but we're sitting at a good spot to maintain that. So when we look at the 2026 budget, we're looking at likely coming in rate that are right around that 40% range on this point in time. So some of our assumptions with wages, benefits, and other costs, we're looking at a 3% increase for wages, benefits, and market adjustments. Those are health insurance, market adjustments for any wage adjustments on that end of it, 2%. And then kind of our other services and charges, that other 25%, we're going to throw in a half a percent on top in there to account for increases there, which isn't much, but I think we did allocate 1% or maybe even 2% last year, or something to that nature. I think it might even 1% now, because we've been at a half a percent for many years on that end of it.
Darren, just a quick question. The 40% number for fund balances is partially reflective of when, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is, you know, our property taxes are due May 15th and October 15th, and city cash flow is based upon when property taxes are paid. So we, we basically have to have enough fund balance to run the city until we get paid right after May 15th and October 15th. And so the fund balances are essential to operate the city without going, taking on debt. Is that a fair statement?
Absolutely. That's the theory behind that as well, absolutely. So we get our taxes, we'll get in advance on our first half taxes, June 20th. Then we'll get the final distribution of that first half in first of July. So we need basically six months, five and a half months of cash flow to help us pay our bills and get through that first five and a half months of the year. And at the end of the year, where our balance is high, we get the second half of the taxes right in December. And so we have lots of cash on hand right at the end of our fiscal year. Whereas if you look at a school district, their fiscal year is June 30th. They may not, sometimes they have their fund balances that are really low. They may not get that distribution until that July timeframe on that end of it. So it's kind of a timing thing for everybody. But for us, yeah, we get a big cash inflow rate at the end of the year, so our cash, our fund balances are higher than, but we still need that for the upcoming year to pay for our bills going forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, like, this is a snapshot of one day in time.
Right.
One day in time, on December 31st, we have a really healthy fund balance, which you need, like you just pointed out, Brad. And you do that snapshot on May 30th, that's a much, that's a much lower number, because you're using those reserves to pay for expenditures.
Absolutely. So there's kind of our assumptions for the inflators above for the expenditure side of it, the 3% for wages, that five and a half percent total on the numbers above there. So that's kind of the general fund overview of how we're kind of forecasting where we're sitting at at the moment, moving forward. And so there are other items that do impact the tax levy. And so this year, I've done this a little bit differently. I split out our special revenue funds, which is the Ice Arena and the Marsh. Historically, over the last many years, we have been transferring, an operational transfer to the Ice Arena from the general fund, which is basically tax money, just we're taking it in one fund and moving it over to the other. And so with the Marsh piece of that there now, I'm like, well, let's, let's call it out kind of as it is and isolate, that these are tax levies. They're in special revenue funds, they can have a tax levy, that's not an issue there. And so we have $100,000 for the Ice Arena, and then we have the $350,000 for the Marsh, and that's just projected out over the next five years. Obviously, we don't know what the assumptions are for the out years. We're mainly looking at the first year of that for 2026, and we'll play it by year as things progress there. The next grouping is the capital project fund levies. And so I'm going to skip to the next page here. This is, this, so catchy. This just lists them out by individual fund, and then you get your total capital project funds here at the very top, is $9.3 million. So if you would have looked at, in the report, I mentioned that last year's assumptions, the levy was built off of like a $500,000 increase in the CIP. When we were doing the 2025 levy, we were projecting 2026 would have a CIP restoration of additional $500,000. So here you can see that actually the levy is decreasing by almost $500,000 from '25 to '26. And that is directly related to those capital, those surplus transfers that we're able to transfer over to the CIP funds from the general fund, from that excess revenue that was available, or excess revenues over expenditures at that point in time. So that's kind of helped levy that out, or level that out a little bit. Obviously, there are a little bit steeper increases in the out years on the CIP, because they are one-time fundings. But we do look at this on an annual basis as well, too, and kind of adjust those transfers as we need to make the more current years, or the more closer future years a little bit more palatable than the far out years on that end of it. But it's still something we keep on our horizon. And as we go down here, this next section is kind of one-time items, or new items, or funding items that are going to impact the budget coming, moving forward. And I should qualify that, that these first, next two items are our debt service. So this is the debt service piece that Mike was talking about, that 4% piece of it. We got part bond debt service levy of $289,000. And this will be our last year of levying that. That bond will be paid off in 2027, collecting '26, paying '27. And then we'll just have the public safety facility to pay for after that. And you can kind of see that the debt service amounts kick up in 2027, and that was done knowing that this part bond was going to be paid off in '26. So those excess dollars then, that debt service levy will stay flat. Additional dollars will go towards the public safety facility in the future. Abatements and cancellations, we take into account that, this is an item that we've always had in the general fund, and taken to account any tax court petitions that are out there. So we have some big commercial properties that petition their taxes or, and such like that, and we have, have to refund taxes. This accounts for some potential loss on that end of it. So we budget about a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars a year on, on that end of it, which is nice to have that in there, especially in this day and age with more vacant commercial property and values being contested on that end of it and such. Ridge Dale tax abatement, that's an ongoing abatement that we've had for Ridge Dale improvements that were done probably a number of years ago, eight, nine, ten years ago on that end of it. That'll be going on for a while. Next year is a primary election cycle, and so we have an additional hundred and forty-five thousand dollars coming into the budget for 2026. The following year, we'll take those dollars out again, so it kind of goes up and down based on if it's a general state election year or not. Oh, no, okay. Next items, we get the red and the blue, so represent police and fire. You did a pretty good job there.
Very clever.
Which is which? Never mind.
Right. So for this first one here, I got seven hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars for 2025 firefighters hired mid-year. So we are hiring nine firefighters, July first-ish on that end of it. We funded half of those in 2025. In 2026, we'll still have to pay for the whole boatload of those. And so that's going to cost us an additional seven hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. So we made that, we made the decision to hire those mid-year in twenty-five. We need to fund those in twenty-six moving forward. And that is the same for this police officer here as well, too. We had on the books to plan to hire one April first, and so we'll get three additional months for next year as well. This isn't, this next one is a de-acquisition as well, too, that was a partial year hire there as well, that came on April first. This shouldn't say 2024, that's a typo. A new item we have coming up in twenty-six is Minnesota paid leave. So that's similar to a short-term disability, a sick leave piece of it. That is, that was passed by the legislature a couple of years ago, that's going into effect on July, January first. Our impact is about a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, hopefully. That's given, that's given a fifty-fifty split on employee, employer contributions on that end of it and such. So we've got a kind of a placeholder in place for that. And then we have, I don't have this one highlighted in blue, and I probably should, but it's 2026 police officer position. So last year, we were trying to make the budget work. And police department has the kind of the biggest, has the biggest operating budget to get the most number of personnel in place there. And so we had a number of open positions. And so talking with chief boardroom and such like that, we're like, well, I think we are able to hold that position in twenty-six. Like, we won't be able to fill that position likely in 2025. That, that position is still authorized, but we're just not going to fund it in 2025, knowing that even if all the stars align and all the moons align, that we probably wouldn't be able to find enough personnel to actually fill all those, all those positions. So we, so we held a position open, unfunded basically, but authorized but unfunded in twenty-five. And so here, we're bringing it in, back into the budget, want to make sure that's accounted for. We can talk more about that as the budget year progresses on that end of it and such. Then we're looking at prosecution support. We are going to have a need and a request probably for some additional prosecution support. Kind of related to public safety master plan, they're adding more patrol officers and such on the street and things like that have resulted in higher case loads and more body camera video, all those types of things are adding to kind of the workload within the legal department there. They're needing something there. The next one is the Axon, which is related to the police department and an agreement that we signed at the end of 2024 in regards to public safety, what is that, or our?
It's about eighteen different applications.
Yeah, that's right. It's not just one. It's record management, it's.
Correct. Many that we already had, we just consolidated.
Body cameras, it's all of that. So we consolidated and signed a ten-year agreement for flat payments over the next ten years with Axon on that end of it. Last year, we paid for that, or in 2025, we paid for that out of the CIP for the first year with the notion that we're going to bring that into the operation, operational budget in twenty-six because it really is truly now an operational cost and unnecessary capital cost on, on that end of it. So that's bringing that into place. There are some additional costs, it's not flat across these five years here because there are some implementation costs that are in the out years. But beyond 2030, it'll be at that six hundred thousand dollar mark on, on that end of it. Compensation analysis, we've got kind of a placeholder for that. We've seen those across different grades and different markets, that there's kind of a need for, kind of looking at that on an annual basis to make sure that we're keeping all the, all the positions comparable. And then, what else? HRA levies on here, and that brings us down to our kind of total levy, kind of before our public safety master plan, before implementing anything new for 2026. Obviously, we have our public safety master plan from items that were carried forward from twenty-five that need funding for twenty-six. And we're at seven point two-five percent. And if we look at our public safety master plan, we have zero in there for, for fire. And I can have Chief Fox and Chief Boardroom speak a little bit to their, kind of their plans here as we adjust these each and every year. So we look at these, we looked at these, this spreadsheet last year at this point in time, those numbers would be different than they are today. They each take a hard look at kind of what, what's going on, what they're expecting, and new innovative ways to get done what they need there. So what we're looking at is, and the police department is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and I believe that's for a community engagement officer position on that end of it. So that brings us down to seven point five-two percent. And there again, if you look at the blue and the red items, that adds up to two point eight-six percent. So if you take that off the seven point five-two, you're in the, you're in that four, upper four type of range on, on that end of it and such. So that's kind of where we're at percentage-wise. If either the chiefs want to talk a little bit about, either the police and, police for fire master plan plans coming up?
Yeah, I can, I can jump in, appreciate it. Good evening, mayor and council. And we are a significant portion of the levy increase, and I thought, I know there's a lot of discussion throughout the year on, on, on the operating costs of police and fire, but I thought I'd give you a little bit of information tonight just so you can have a larger picture of what we have going on. And so the public safety master plan that was completed in 2003 included fifty-nine key findings and forty-seven action items. And not all of those key findings required an increase to the budget. Many of them were non-budget items that we have since implemented. The ones that had a budget impact included increasing capacity in divisions such as our patrol division, our investigations and community engagement efforts. And then also identifying technology that would make us more efficient. And this was done several years ago, and each year, we're seeing new technology evolve. And quite frankly, it's, it's amazing. And as we enter year three of our, our plan, we have already increased capacity control with additional staff and investigations. We have also implemented technology, as Darren had mentioned, with the Axon public safety suite. And there are some recommendations that are to further consider, and that includes two additional retail detectives assigned to the Ridge Dale area, two new officers assigned to a mental health response unit, a traffic officer, which currently we have funded through a state grant, and hopefully we can continue that, and then an additional community engagement officer. We do recognize the budget impact of staffing increases and the various competing priorities we all have. And each year, we review our staffing study to see is this absolutely necessary? Because sometimes, you know, it's, it's nice to add staff, but they come at significant cost. You have salary, you have benefits, they're ongoing costs, we have training. And so we take that very seriously, and so we look at other alternatives to that. And so going into next year and beyond, we believe for the police that instead of funding two new police officers to create a mental health unit, these funds should be redirected to funding the additional firefighters, and we are already working closely with the fire department on enhancing our mental health response. We'll also continue to seek grants to maintain our traffic officer position. That's our DWI officer that's currently funded through the state. And then lastly, I had a mention, in our, in our public safety master plan, there is a recommendation to hire two additional retail detectives. And we have identified a hybrid model, which we believe is cost-effective, intelligence-driven approach to retail crime. It includes a patrol-based response with our current patrol resources, and then enhancing our technology. And this is done primarily through our drone program and our real-time information center. And this technology, we believe, can also benefit other city operations such as fire and public works. And then I briefly mentioned these initiatives during our department presentation earlier this, this year. And I'm excited that we'll be coming to you next week to share more information about this exciting opportunity. So I wanted to give you a little bit, but next week, we have a full presentation on what we believe will, will be the capstone of our public safety study and really eliminate the need to ask for any additional police officers. So that's really all I had, but there's way more discussions to happen. But I just think it was important because we are like two point two-some percent of your levy, so we wanted to share that with you.
Thanks, chief. Yeah, well, we're waiting with bated breath, so, you know, we probably can't wait till next week, till next meeting, but.
Deputy chief has his work cut out for him.
Okay.
Thank you.
No pressure.
Thank you. Any, council, any questions for Chief Boardroom? All right, thanks.
Kevin, do you want to?
Chief Fox.
Hi, good to meet you. Yeah, so if you remember in April at the study session, we presented the council with our service level objectives and the fire station analysis. And as we are moving into the third year of the public safety master plan, one of the things we wanted to really look at over the next couple of years is not only what's going to happen with the facilities, but really how we're deploying our personnel and how it pertains with the mental health response that we're going to be taking on and the state of EMS. We're still unsure as to what's occurring with that. So we didn't want to keep adding people just for the sake of adding people, even though it does help with that effective response force. We really want to take the time and be cognizant about how we're adding our personnel and how it's affecting those response times as well. So we thought, taking kind of a year off in 2026 with adding personnel is going to give us a little bit of time to kind of put some of these puzzle pieces into place and then see how the data plays out before we come with another request for personnel. So we believe over the next, you know, eighteen to twenty-four months, we should have a better idea of what our true needs are. And as part of the public safety master plan in our presentation was that we, we did want to remain flexible in this, even though it was laid out as a five-year plan. We knew in reality, it was probably more of a, in some cases, a seven-year, eight-year plan, so that's what we're navigating.
Thanks, chief. Council, any, any comments? Well, we'll go ahead.
I'm sort of, wow. First of all, I just wanted, I mean, you know, I work for a capital city and just that collegiality of, and the cooperation between our public safety folks is kind of astounding and very rare, so it makes me a little verklunt, I have to say. And, you know, I just want to make sure, always, 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 that you're not doing that. Because like, we're feeling the heat, I think we all feel the heat. I always want to make sure that our fire and police have what they need. So, I mean, if something changes, you know, we can't, we can't make the levy go up after we approve the preliminary in September, but let's make sure that we build in what we need to build in in September. But thank you very much for being sensitive and thoughtful.
Paul?
Just echoing that, thank you for kind of willing to take a pause for a year and just analyze what's the public safety master plan and its effect thus far before going forward. I think it's, it's just both wise and, and very considerate. You know, I'm sure Deb knows better than, or council member Calvert knows better than I that, you know, turf wars often get fought, and everybody wants, you know, their piece of the pie. So for me, and rightly so, and this is such an important piece, but for you to, you guys to step back and say, hey, we think we, we really want to take this time to be thoughtful and analytical about what's working, it's like.
And it's not just about the money, it's just the way you're thinking about like the, the mental health of our community members and how we're responding to it. I mean, it's really.
Yep.
Pretty impressive and astounding, so, yeah.
Thank you both. Anything else anyone wants to add?
I'll just echo what was said, and also, you know, I know that hiring, and I was surprised to hear at, at the banquet, that even in the fireside, hiring's gotten more challenging. And I think doing this, I, it's so deliberate, and it makes a lot of sense. And it also, I hope it takes some of the pressure off that idea of getting the numbers up just because you have the space. And Scott, you've been so great about making sure that you're hiring the right people. And hopefully, having some breathing room also helps do that as well. We can be, we can keep our standards up, so maybe a silver lining to taking a deep breath.
Anyone else? Yeah, I'll just, I'll just echo a couple of comments that were made. I mean, you know, I think, I think we're looking at things in an innovative way. And I think that, you know, mental health is such a big part of the public safety response these days. And, and my takeaway is that we want to do it right. We don't need, it's not a turf issue, it's how are we going to provide the, the mental health support that our residents need and visitors to our community need. And I think the approach that you're taking, you're the experts, I'm not, but one, I really appreciate that. The other thing is, I really appreciate the aspect of leveraging technology. I mean, we know how hard it is to recruit police officers and firefighters, and, and personnel are so critical to what we do. But if there are ways to reduce that need through technology and leveraging technology, I, I think that just, that just really helps us in terms of both our effectiveness and, and frankly, cost management. Because while technology costs go up, those drones don't, they don't get benefits, and they don't. A lot of the things that drive our costs up that are part of the not controllable piece, you know, that, that solves for that to a certain degree. And so, you know, I really appreciate the innovation that we're, we're taking to public safety. And, you know, you guys know what you're doing, and I really appreciate it, and I think you guys work well together. And that's very refreshing because I can't tell you how many cities and mayors and, and city officials I talked to. And there is so much competition between police and fire that in some cases, they barely talk to one another. And we do not have that problem here, and I, and I'm really proud of that. And that's a real reflection on, on both the departments and the personnel we have leading them, so thank you so much.
And just clear the record, I wasn't talking about turf in that sense. I was talking about every department thinks that what they're doing is like super important.
It is.
It is.
It is.
Yeah. And it is. And, and for you guys to, you know, you all to kind of step back and say, looking at it holistically and what the whole community needs, I think is what I was trying to say in terms of the appreciation.
Well, thanks. Well, we'll move on now, but, but thank you.
All right, sounds good. Go ahead. Go ahead. I was just going to follow up, I didn't mention the, the out-year forecast on the, on the levies here as well, too. As you can see, it goes to bottom here. Seven point five-two is the 2026 forecast at this point in time. And then it goes eight point three-nine, seven point nine-three, and so on and so forth on that end of it. Obviously, we look to tweak those as we get closer to those on, on that end of it, obviously. But that's kind of where it's sitting at ballpark-wise at this point in time, so. And then there's a public, public, or the police and fire levy impacts are below there as well. And it goes through 2029 at this point in time, so it kind of extended one more year there, so.
So, but for clarity, the, those two, the, the number, the eight point three-nine and two point one-two, though, that's in twenty-seven, and the seven point five-two and the two point eight-six for, for twenty-six, those are not additive. The two point eight-six is, is included, the seven point five-two, and I think it's important for us to make sure we're clear on that.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Good point. All right, so I think I'm picking it back to Mike.
Yeah, I'll have the next few slides. Darren, just back up one more time. I'm sure you're ready to move on from this, from this slide, but just a couple more things to point, to point out. Again, as you just mentioned, Brad, so seven point five-two, so a couple of things again, just to clarify. I think you picked up on what we're saying. Of this, again, the seven point five-two, the new monies in that is not two point eight-six percent. It's really limited to that hundred and fifty thousand that Chief Boardroom talked about. We got the, was it the, the trailer to the new Will Ferrell movie? So we're going to have, we got the, setting up the meeting for next Monday. Well, the chief will bring forward some discussion on some technology, on how we can better leverage ourselves. That'll be next Monday. And so really, this two point eight-six percent, the, the large piece of it again, is up in the dollars that have been committed from last year's discussions and leading into paying for full personnel for this year. So I just want to again make sure you're clear on that. And then the other thing, well, Darren will point out a slide coming up just on these levy projections moving forward. And then as we get into a few more slides, these un. And then as we get into a few more slides, these un, these boxes up here that are yellow. And so we're going to then circle back at some point here coming up on if we were to do some sort of improvements to facilities, what does that look like and how might that impact a levy if you were to use general obligation debt?
Okay.
So we'll, we'll walk through that. So we'll walk through filling in this, where it is blank now, if you were to consider again some sort of general obligation debt for facilities. So keep that in mind as we get to the next slide.
Okay, and then just one question, this is a small thing, but we talked about it earlier. The Glen Lake Activity Center dollars are in the CIP, so they would not be additive, whereas anything else, the Marsh, Williston, the Community Center, would be additive. Is that, is that a correct understanding?
Yeah, correct, Brad. So in, with the Glen Lake, as noted by Kelly and Sarah earlier, that in the CIP and the next, is it the next study session or the one coming up, we have the CIP/EIP, you'll see that more specifically. The Skateboard Park, correct me if I'm wrong, Kelly, or it serves like 800 to 900,000, somewhere in there, I'm going off top memory here, that total project, eight or 900,000. Embedded in that cap improvement project is the demolition of the Glen Lake Activity Center.
Okay, great. I just, I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah.
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 Okay, I know we have a number of slides to get through and we're going to be targeting, try to get done at 8:30, so I will try to pick up my pace here a little bit. Again, in the, in your packet for tonight was the director presentations, again, we had the addenda that brought in Public Works. Just really want to touch on some of the challenges and opportunities. Can we highlight these for you? Because the reason we have directors point this out to you is that we want you as staff, for you to understand our opportunities as we see them, the challenges that we see as staff. So then you have that understanding, then as we approach the budget, if there are anything in these that need to be reflective in the budget, that we have that conversation as well. Again, I won't go through every one of these bullet points, just a couple of things that I would point out. We're going to jump down to climate action and adaptation. Ms. Wischnak, I'll probably put her on the spot here in terms of really one of the challenges there with our climate action and adaptation plan. We have a, one position, our sustainability coordinator, that manages all that activity. It is, there is a work plan in place and so the Sustainability Commission does create a work plan that came to you earlier this year, approved by the council. One of the challenges in that is we did lose our Green Corps opportunity this year. That was an instrumental position in helping our activities surrounding sustainability. Correct me if I'm wrong, Julie, around 1,800 hours.
That's my estimate.
Excuse me?
That's my estimate, yes.
So about 1,800 hours. We've had how many years of Green Corps members here at the city? We're, we're not able to have that program this year, so it's a loss for us.
Oh, sure. I can describe.
Sorry, if you're going to do your presentation, I'm just.
No, I don't have a presentation, I'll just answer the question. So we apply, we have to apply every season, if you will, for Green Corps. So it's not a promise to the city, we've had them before in sustainability specifically. We had two Green Corps members, not this past year, but the year before. When we reapplied this year, I recall that there were 90 applications for 40 spots and we did not receive the funding. Or I shouldn't say that, we don't actually get money, we get people and time. The other thing is there's not really good information about whether or not the program is actually going to continue. So the AmeriCorps right now is totally done. It sounds like Green Corps might get picked up by the state, they might provide some funding, and so I don't know how that's going to land, but they definitely said we were not in the running for members. So it does make it one percent back, long answer to the question. Sorry, Mike.
Thank you, Julie.
Yep.
So certainly a challenge for us this year that puts just certainly a lot more pressure on one of our staff members to carry out, fulfill the mission of our, of our, of our cap plan. Some other things just worth noting here, opportunities, and again, Darren and I have talked about program-based budgeting, we, we do see that as an opportunity, that's something we're embarking on this year. Hopefully we'll see some opportunity that comes out of that process in terms of reallocating some dollars to fit needs, increasing infrastructure costs, and that goes without saying, just we see that reflective in our budgets. Even in 2025's budget, as I alluded to earlier, just cost of business was almost 5% this year. And that's, that, we're seeing more of those same trends, just with interest rates, so with potential tariffs into play, so service, service delivery with receiving parts and supplies is still kind of a challenge, so certainly that's part of our operations we keep an eye on. You know, we listed Emerald Ashbore there, that's always with trees and dying trees, lots of those in the community and certainly we're doing our best to keep up with that. Noted on the right-hand side is a little more public safety that you've heard about from our chiefs previously, just with call volumes, overlapping calls, EMS and mental health response, where again, the chiefs have been addressing that here this evening. Looking at how we use technology, again, the chief, chief is coming forward with one of those solutions next Monday. Looking at different efficiencies, certainly with Office 365 is another one here at the city, just as we look to improve our technology. I would say just overall, and I kind of bounce back to that first bullet point, recruitment and retention, staying competitive has, has been a challenge just with, with the city and we continue to invest in our staff and it, it still presents a challenge. And we've been successful in keeping people and recruiting people, but nonetheless, it is certainly on our, on our forefront. I would also say just work volumes, workload. We, I, I will say this all day long, I don't believe as a city we're overstaffed. We, we are busy. We, I think, are, all of our staff, our directors would all say, we, there's not a shortage of work here at the city.
I feel like being a city staffer, it, it, this year felt busy. You know, being in finance department, it just, it feels different this year than it's felt.
And certainly the, the budget plays into it, how we balance our budget and just recognizing a lot of these challenges. We've implemented again more technologies, Axon's been a great tool for the, for the police. Fire's also implemented some new technology as well for their, for their operations. I think Chief Fox has talked about that recently. Having a new dashboard, for example, is going to be coming online here very soon. So again, a lot, a lot of really cool things happening, but nonetheless, a lot of, a lot of challenges. Looking long-term, just some of those challenges and opportunities, again, the Public Safety Master Plan and the funding that of the next few years, the future EMS service delivery. I think Mayor Worson's been involved in some conversations and some of you as well, just what that looks like long-term with service delivery and response times and how does ambulance fit into all of it. And so certainly that's on our radar. Recreation facilities that we've talked about, fire stations we've talked about, OPUS we're going to be talking about. Implementation of the cap is certainly a challenge, just again, as we just talked about. CIP as well, and we'll get into our CIP coming up at one of our next study sessions, just, just keeping things going with a levy that's really kind of flatlined with our CIP. And so again, just making sure we've got the money available with our equipment purchases and replacements and projects and road projects, all of that, and still again, very much a challenge. And there are ERP and human capital management plans, and so that still is something that we need to invest in. So a lot, a lot of needs as we're, as we're pointing out and challenges with, with our operations. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Darren, just to, we'll get through a few more slides here on data, try to wrap it up quickly here, mayor and council, so that way we've got a, a good half hour for, for some conversation.
Yep, absolutely. And so here's a slide that you guys have seen, all seen in the past, this is just updated with 2025 data on there now. Just breaks down between the capital operations and the debt service, the orange being the, the operational side of things and then the, the blue kind of being the, the, the CIP portion of that. Obviously the blue and the, the debt are fairly constant from year to year and it's our operational piece of that that's kind of been expanding over the last number of, last ten years or so on that end of it. This one I wanted to look at, going back five years and looking forward then the next five years as well too, and kind of showing, as Mike mentioned earlier, kind of our, our projections from last year at this point in time, and then our projections currently at this point in time, and then just kind of overlaying it with the Public Safety Master Plan as well too. And so the orange line here is the actual levy through 2025, our actual levies over the course of that time. The blue line that you see from '26 through '29 would have been the projected levies this time last year minus the community facility improvements. So last year, initially, we had the community center, not community center, but community facility improvements budgeted as a, as a debt service capital levy last year at this point in time. Taking that out of the equation, you can see that we would have had 8%, 9.9%, 9.09%, 7.74%, et cetera, as our projections is moving forward. Now we're looking at the projections a year later, we're at 7.52, 8.39, so they've moderated slightly, they're still in basically the same, same era or same geographic area as that, as they were last year at this point, at that point. So just kind of showing kind of those scenarios of, of how we forecast that from year to year. And then overlaying that obviously with the Public Safety Master Plan, account for those larger increases over that '24 through '29 timeframe.
Again, real quick, part of that was I asked Darren, rewind the clock, this time last year, what did we project? How do we do, what did we say this time last year and what are we saying now this year? And so again, this is a fluid document, we're slightly, we're projecting slightly better now than we were last year at this time, so again, we're kind of, you know, we're holding ourselves accountable and looking at just how we're, how we're forecasting and how we're projecting.
So this is also a, a graph here and you can see, you'll see the spaghetti one next time, but this is our, a number of our comparable cities, it's probably a few more than what our truly or, or 10 comparable are. But these are a number of the cities that we compare ourselves to in that it shows the last 20 years of tax levies. And you can see that the average aggregate increase over 20 years is 99%. So if you added up every levy increase or every levy, some of them are actually decreases, you'd be, 99% would be the average over that 20-year timeframe. And that's what is indicated by that horizontal blue line going across there. City of Minnetoka is just below that, we've been, a couple of years ago, we were like dead on average, we've actually dropped down below average a little bit over the last three years, we've been percent to percent and a half below kind of the average of these cities levy increases. But you can see kind of where everybody is at, obviously depends on, every city's different, lots of cities go up and down, we try to stay somewhat consistent from, from year to year on that end of it, not have big fluctuations in our, in our levies. And the next one kind of shows that, shows that piece of it. Minnetoka is the thick blue line in here, that's really in the middle of, of all those levy increases and we don't have the, the high spikes from one year to the next. It's all the same data as the previous slide, just in a different format on, on that end of it, so.
As Darren mentioned, this is what we're trying to avoid, I don't, I'm not going to point out the name of the city, but you see, this city's just bouncing so up, up and down with their levy, that's what we're trying to avoid through our, through this planning effort, is to be more, more consistent from year to year. All right, just real quickly as a reminder of some of our survey results, again, we're teeing all this up, you have just a lot of data tonight, kind of a, a big purge on you and then we'll, we'll end up with those questions here at the end. Just as a reminder with some of the relevant community survey results, again, I won't want to, I won't spend much time here, there's question 29, just about, would you consider the property tax you pay? It's a quality of life question. So again, as you, as you remember, a resident should they get good value between excellent and good, almost 90, 90, or 88% with value of services. Question 30 was, if you could increase the property tax levy, which one of these major areas would you prioritize? And this was kind of equal distribution, so we didn't get a clear-cut answer on all that, so more equal distribution between police, fire, streets, parks, trails. Question 31 is, would you favor or oppose an increase in your property taxes if it were needed to maintain, maintain city services? 80% favor. What services would be willing to cut? Kind of across the board for the most part. Parks and trails got the biggest, biggest one on that one, at 33%. What do you like least about living in Minnetoka? Again, this is where we talk about, this is where the taxes come up, this is where we see the, the high taxes. So I think that's what we're all trying to do, is understand that high taxes isn't an issue, but understanding that people are also willing to fund core services and raise taxes for core services. Moving on, just a couple of other questions. This one was about local option sales tax. So many, the question was, many cities in Minnesota have asked voters to approve a local sales tax to provide funding for capital improvements instead of a property tax increase. And so they, the survey has read them a list, which is items noted there in 33 through 38. Of those items, which one would you support, a local sales tax or property tax for that purpose? So it's, so for example, in 33, upgrades to the city fire stations, 37% sales tax, 40% property tax, 21% neither. So you can go through those yourself and kind of see where they landed. For the most part, there is support for, for a sales tax over a property tax and probably for the obvious, obvious reason. The question then was followed up with, down at the bottom, a sales tax increase would not only capture sales tax from city residents, but also from people outside the city who make purchases in Minnetoka. University of Minnesota study projected 54% of the new sales tax revenue would come from people who live outside the city and use services, which teed up that question 39 in the upper right-hand corner. Does that make you much more likely to support the sales tax, somewhat more likely, somewhat less likely, much less likely, or make no difference? And the much more likely and somewhat more likely is in that 67% range. And I think the business surveys on the next, is that the next one?
We'll, we'll go to the business survey and then we'll go back to the.
Oh, business survey, yeah, thank you. Business survey, so and Julie led, in the community development, led the business survey, so similar question presented in the business survey. You heard that from Peter Leatherman, that between strongly support and support, again, that's 62% of the business community, which probably would be, say, somewhat surprising that the business community did tend to support, again, the sales tax. Why that's relevant is we start to get into, and let's just.
Do you want to back there?
Oh, you're right, yeah, thank you. So there's one other, one other slide here, just to talk a lot on the survey. I can try to hear my own notes. So this was, I would like to read a list of issues related to local environment and sustainability for each of the following, please tell me if that issue is very important to take action on, somewhat important, not too important or not at all. Many of the responses here landed in that very important to somewhat important, which is energy conservation, water conservation, extended mass transit, climate change, reducing waste. So certainly the community, their sentiment in the community to support those initiatives. And so think about, again, the cap plan and how we lift that off the ground. Would you be willing to see a property tax increase to fund the city's work on these issues? So strongly yes and yes was in that 68%. Right, again, just more, more background information for you as we get to these questions. Now we get to, again, kind of pivoting here to the heart of, I think, a little bit of tonight as well, is the facility strategies, the facilities that we've talked about. These are all noted here as you see. So with the columns, on the left you have the facilities, so fire station two, three, four, and five, the community center renovation, marsh renovation, Williston, and then Glen Lake. Some funding strategies that staff has identified. So for example, on the fire stations, either state bonding, we have not asked for state bonding dollars, we've tended to ask for, as you know, with OPUS and with the Marsh, it's possible we should be rethinking our strategy on asking for bonding dollars, perhaps for fire stations, we might get more traction in that regard. What we're seeing at least out of, out of this legislature is more emphasis towards public safety. Water plants, sewer plants, fire stations, police stations, more so than recreational facilities.
Core services.
So perhaps we need to rethink our strategy on bonding requests. Certainly then we have a sales tax option as we think about the fire stations and then general obligation debt as well. So those are three, three different distinct funding opportunities or options in there. And then we've noted as staff how those are listed as priorities in those facility studies. So for example, fire station two was the first priority, fire station three is the second, four was third, fire station five is fourth. I think I have that, hopefully I got that correct, Chief. All right, thank you. And then with the, the rec facilities, the community center, possible funding strategies, I guess they're not all noted there, we could use general obligation debt. I'm talking with Mr. Nelson, there's, I think there's an opportunity perhaps for the community investment fund as well, so we don't have to look at perhaps general obligation or taxpayer debt. The Marsh, now we've talked again about state bonding, I do think that's probably a harder lift with the Marsh unfortunately, so we could look at potential sales tax or then again, some sort of general obligation debt as relates to the Marsh. Williston could be sales tax or property tax bonding and then some sort of inter-fund loan opportunity. So I think Darren has some ideas on looking at ways to look at the Williston Center outside of property taxes. And then as we've noted already a few times, Glen Lake is in the CIP. And then also noted with the rec facilities, those priority rankings are also listed. Number one listed as the community center, two Marsh, three Williston, and then Glen Lake is four, but I think Glen Lake is naturally probably going to occur with the skate park. Moving ahead, so some of those estimates as a reminder, so going back to Chief Fox's presentation here at the last study session, again, those facilities. Again, those facilities are noted here. So the fire station, well, with all the fire stations, there was renovation and new construction pointed out, ranging in anywhere from nineteen to thirty-seven million. We, we haven't asked, or staff hasn't asked about what your preferred option is in all of that. That's why it's blank, because we haven't had that conversation. Kind of leaving that here alone tonight, but mainly presenting you with, just getting your heads wrapped around what's the cost. And so we've got a range of nineteen to thirty-seven million with fire facilities. Again, recapping what Kelly and Sarah talked about earlier with our facilities and recreation. That's why I asked you the question earlier, what are your preferred options? Kind of assuming that's kind of where you were if funding wasn't an issue. That potentially be around twenty-five point eight million. Again, I would note though, those are construction costs only. That does not include soft costs as noted in the lower left-hand quarter. If you added the soft costs, that's.
Sorry, I'm not behind.
I'm just, oh, I'm talking up my slide. I'm on track. Sorry, Darren.
I'm sorry, I was.
Doesn't include.
You were listening. You were good.
Yeah, it doesn't include.
This makes, well, now it probably makes more sense that I see it here. So these are, again, the recreational facilities. As we noted earlier in the first part of tonight's presentation, really just wanted to get funding was no option. Like is that kind of where you're, where you're at in terms of options? Again, knowing that these all can change, looking at just a potential cost of twenty-eight, twenty-five point eight six seven million. That does not include soft costs. If you add in soft costs, we're closer to thirty-five million. So if you go back to the previous slide, so you think of like rec facilities, thirty-five million perhaps? Go back to the previous slide. Thank you. Fire facilities, nineteen to thirty-seven million. So really what, I think as staff, what we're, again, trying to tee up with you is what is our long-term priorities? What are our long-term strategies? How do we best approach these? When do we approach these, et cetera? So that's not the question yet, but yeah, Brad.
Well, if I can comment, there, there's a couple of things because to answer the question, if money were not an object. Well, all of us know that money is an object. And so if money were an object, you know, let's just have Bill Gates pay it for all to get it done. But that's not realistic. So, you know, given the fact that we are in a challenging budget circumstance, does that change our priorities and how much we're willing to spend? I think that's a more, that's a better way to ask the question. Then the other piece going over to the fire stations. You know, I mean, given the circumstance we're in, well, cheaper is better. Well, no, it's not. I mean, if, if the utility of a re, a renovated fire station is eighty points out of a hundred and a new fire station is a hundred points out of a hundred, that's a lot different than if the utility is thirty points of a renovated station is thirty points out of a hundred and a new station is a hundred. So we need to, you know, we need some expertise, you know, expert context to better make a decision. Because I could see some circumstances where you're saying, well, if we get eighty points out of a hundred and the difference is, you know, a third the cost, I'll probably go with the eighty points. If it's, if it's thirty points and it's, it's really limp and by and not very good and going to be obsolete in two years, you know, then that's a much different decision. So we need a little coaching and perspective to be able to answer these questions, I think, if that's, if that's reasonable. And I don't know if anyone articulated it better than I did, but, but I can see where, you know, I mean, station five has probably more renovation potential than station two would be my guess. I don't know that. That's just a guess. But, you know, I think we need a little context on that to make a better decision here to, to guide you. Because I don't think anyone, I don't think this council wants to say, well, we should force our fire department to deal with something that's not very useful, but we got by. On the other hand, I think we need some context because I don't think we would recommend probably new construction in all cases.
Well, and I mean, I think, I think the issue is, I, I think the fire station issue is complex because it's where do we need to improve response times the most with this, with the staffing that's needed there? And, you know, some, some fire stations have, you know, you can put a few people there for now kind of thing. And it's very complicated. So to your point, I mean, it's a lot to weed through and some of the construction costs are more at some places. It's, it's not a purely cost benefit analysis in this case. And so that's one thing. And then the other thing is when looking at the nausea-producing numbers that we are looking at for, you know, the needs that we have in the city. I mean, I'm always leaning towards making sure that, again, the core, core services to your, so to your point about looking at state bonding for public safety. I mean, that's where I go because I think everyone right now is kind of going to the, those sort of baseline core services that literally like keep people alive and, and less necessarily the, the quality of life. Things that, that really make Minnetoka, Minnetoka. But, so I'm always, but we still need everything. So I, I think your comments are spot on. And I, and I just think we will need a little more coaching on sort of how to weed through the fire facility cost estimates.
And this is what we're looking for tonight, counsel. Again, this is a first, your first time really kind of seeing it in this kind of format. And it's going to take some time. It's going to take some time to get through this and that's okay. And there's no, there's nothing pushing us to get this.
It's not November.
It's not November. That's why we're starting that conversation today. And really as staff, we want to understand what you, what you need further to, to get to that decision. Because there, there is a lot of complexities into all of this and how they're funded, when they're funded. And so we teed up the questions. Yeah, it's a big ask on those questions, but certainly we understand there's more information that we're going to have to bring forward. And we'll, we'll continue to package and refine and find a, find a path forward. We have some more slides we want to get through. I think that will kind of help.
Kimberly had a comment too quick, I think.
Oh, I had a question, but I can maybe.
Wait, okay.
Okay.
All right.
And then OPUS, you know, we haven't, I mean, that was, that's still on our radar screen. That has not been lost. We've been asking for bonding dollars for, I think this is our third, like, well, take that back. We did receive bonding dollars initially to the tune of seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. I think that was in twenty twenty-three, if I'm not mistaken. And then we've been asking for bonding dollars since for the actual construction aspect of it, that too. We'll have to evaluate our ask in that. I think at the end of the day, we want to try to ask for bonding dollars for something that we're going to get bonding dollars for. Because wherever we get it here is going to help over there. So it, it doesn't have to be for that particular project. We're just trying to maximize where we can get some state funds back into the city of Minnetoka and have the best chances of doing that. But yes, OPUS is still on the radar screen. It's a potentially thirty million dollar project. We're going to be starting that process here this year in terms of trying to fill in that blank canvas. Because it is a blank canvas and there's some work that staff has to do in terms of preparing for that. We're going to need to bring a consultant on board, some public engagement. We've got to be working with the property owner. But yes, certainly OPUS and the light rail stations are still a big, a big target for us to hit. So thirty million for that facility, again, whether it's state bonding, we have potential park dedication fees, perhaps the property tax, sales tax, all on the table as we try to figure out even OPUS in the mix. Start adding up the dollars, right? This is the, this way to start off with. It's a long-term planning exercise. When you look at our rec facilities, our fire facilities, OPUS. You know, we're in that potentially anywhere from sixty to a hundred million dollars in all of this, depending on all sorts of moving parts.
Very good.
So we're just about done. Those are the questions. Before we start answering the questions, if we can, Brad and counsel, again, those are the questions. What Darren has teed up for us is just a little bit about, just to give you a sense of if we were to do some level of bonding, irrespective of what projects they are, you've kind of teed up four, I think, four or five different scenarios in here just to give you a flavor of what bonding dollars would look like for any of these projects. Look, Darren.
Right, yeah, absolutely. So I simplified that financial management plans, skinned it all down and tried to just focus on just the yellow section here that I overlooked the first time around, obviously. But really a couple of different scenarios in here. So this one here is just kind of a baseline. It gets us that, and this is based off of thirty-seven and a half million dollars. I know the community center or the recreational facilities was just under that a little bit. And fire station was right in that ballpark. I had a bond run done about this time last year on thirty-seven and a half million dollars. So I'm like, well, we're in the ballpark. We can kind of see percentage-wise what that does to a levy at, at this point in time. And taking into account, we can structure these in a number of different ways. This one's kind of structured, kind of stepping into it over a three-year timeframe, so a little bit higher the first year, a little bit lower the, each of the, the next two years on that end of it. So if we did, the, the biggest amount for each of those facilities at thirty-seven and a half million dollars each, that would add two point six million dollars to the levy, bring your levy increase from seven point, what do we get? Seven point five two to twelve point two four percent. So we're looking at five percent, four and three-quarter, five percent levy increase at that dollar mark. That's a big dollar. So that's seventy million dollars of bond issuance hitting, hitting the tax levy. That was just one scenario. I wanted to do a couple more as well too. So that's all those, all those facilities, that's building new facilities, all the new fire stations. That's doing the marsh, the Williston, community center, we're getting, getting that all done. The next one I did, just the fire stations at thirty-seven and a half million dollars. That's obviously half of what the previous one was. That brings it down to nine point eight eight this year, nine point seven next year, nine point oh two. Fire station impact on the levy is, you know, two point three, one point five, one point five on those out years. Looking at the thirty-seven and a half million dollars and that's building new of all those facilities. We don't know what that's mix of that is, but kind of just giving you a little bit of base lining. So those are the high ones. Next I looked at fire station improvements and just kind of taking a, a little, kind of bite at the apple until maybe something else can trigger something down the road in a couple of years if sales taxes available or state bonding or something of that nature. We did eleven and a half million, which was me just arbitrarily picking a number two remodel and a number in station two remodel and a new station at station three, because those were the priorities. Stations two, three, four, or five was a priority. Looking at what was the highest priority first and then the one after that. So we needed eleven and a half million dollars. Looking at that levy impact, we'd have about four hundred, four hundred thousand dollars the first year. And it goes up to six eighty-three the second year. That's about a point seven three percent impact to the levy for twenty twenty-six. Brings you up to eight and a quarter. Gets you some, gets you a start on some of the projects on that end of it, on the fire side of things.
What's the next year then too, Darren? Can you go back?
Yeah.
What is it? It's, it's first, thank you.
So point seven three, point four seven, point four three.
Okay.
So it kind of goes.
But I just was looking at the total. So it's.
Eight point two five, eight point eight, eight point two eight.
So.
So we're in the eights, yep. And you're still doing the public safety master plan operational side of that thing during this timeframe as, as well too. So you're taking on some projects.
I mean, it just looks like the next three years regardless are going to.
Next three is going to be tough.
Be.
Challenging.
Yeah. No matter what we do.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
In the, in the last three, the last two years, and this is the third year that they've been challenged, they've all been very challenging. They get more and more each, each year on that end of it. Option four was taking that same scenario with the fire stations, the number two remodel and number three new, and then adding in the marsh only. After hearing your discussions from earlier tonight, maybe that priority changes. But adding in the marsh improvements to this increases that levy to nine point eight percent in twenty twenty-six, nine point six six in the out year or twenty-seven, and then just about nine percent in twenty-eight as well. So that's about a point seven three percent levy impact and a half a percent the, the following years on, on that end of it. I think I did one more small one after this. And so I did just a number two station remodel of two point five million dollars and then the community center only. Just thinking about probably needing to have to do a bond issue and not wanting to, wanting to do it for enough to make it worthwhile and not be cost prohibitive on the booty fees and the issuance costs and all those kinds of things on, on that end of it. Looking at community center remodel, which the previous slide we talked about maybe funding out of the community investment fund. Those funds would still be there. We could use those for another fire station or the marsh or the Williston or any of those types of things. But right now we're kind of looking at, hey, for us to get the, the community center done, which is a priority, we could probably do those of the community investment fund through some sort of internal loan basically to pay that back over ten years. We're making, you know, four to five hundred thousand dollars of interest a year. We could assume easily that we're going to clear three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year over ten years. That would pay for that, that project on that end of it. But this might be a, a different option as well too, if we take that and bond those dollars with minor improvements to the, the fire station number two. Gets us that little piece of the apple and gets us down the road a couple more years as, as an option. So countless options out there. These are just five that I came up with off in the top of my head over the course of fifteen minutes or so. So, so kind of just want to share that with you, kind of wanted to show you what those taxing packs are. Obviously you can be as much as you want or as little as you want or none of it if you want, obviously on that end of it. So anything else, Mike?
No, I think, yeah, thank you, Darren. So we'll go back to those questions. And so I think as, not to repeat what Darren said, really just trying to give you a sense for what a levy could look like in terms of funding it through general obligation debt. There's again, other strategies. There's, there's sales tax that could be used in any one of these or all of them. There's the general obligation debt. We're just showing you geo debt. If you were to fund it all through geo debt, what that could look like. But there are other ways to get there. The hard part tonight is, and we don't have enough time tonight to lay out all those different scenarios. Really wanted to make sure we're teeing this up to spark conversation, to give you a, a sense of the challenges, to give you a sense of what some possibilities could look like. And then that'll, your feedback will be helpful as we continue to bring information forward for, for all of us to look at what is a long-term strategy and what are those priorities and continue to find options in there. So that kind of gives us back to the questions.
All right. And Kimberly, you had a question that you wanted to get answered.
I do have a question. It's about sales tax. So as you mentioned, the, the House passed a bill. We're continuing the moratorium on sales tax. And so, and so it's going to go to conference committee. Are we lobbying? And I don't know that any of our Minnetoka representatives are on that committee. So like, but are we lobbying? Is League of Minnesota Cities lobbying? Is Metro Cities lobbying? Or like, are we lobbying to not have that moratorium continue?
Yeah, good. Thank you, Kimberly. If I, to answer that, I think I've mentioned the sales tax to all of you. But just to summarize it again, so where the legislature stands today, the House Taxes Committee, they passed their version of a tax bill last week. And in that version of the House bill, they've extended, they, the committee extended the moratorium. Trying to get clarifying language around that because it's ambiguous in the sense of it talks about a July, extension of the moratorium to July of twenty-six and then uses the word biennium in that same language. So the question for clarity purposes is, is the, if the House version is approved, is the moratorium for one year through July of twenty-six or is it for the whole biennium, which gets us through twenty-seven as well? So, so seeking that clarity. That bill, that's the House version and the Senate has also a taxes committee. They have not approved their tax bill yet. I'm not sure when that's being heard. We're monitoring it. In the Senate, the, the chairs and rest, we understand from Chair Rest's position that the moratorium, if she got her way, that the moratorium would be lifted. And not sure what the rules would be in place, if we would revert back to current state law. There's also been recommendations by a work group that has been presented to the legislature. But we're unclear at this point, if the moratorium's lifted in the Senate, what version of rules would come into play? If there's some, so what we've got is conflicting bills. And so when you got conflicting bills, it goes to conference committee. And then the conference committee is, which is made up of both House and Senator, or House representatives and then the Senate. They would need to reach a consensus on what a final package would look like. Then they go vote on it as a both bodies. So unclear where sales tax will land. I think I copied all of you an email I sent to our four legislators, just alerting them to our, at least I think our concern of that moratorium. The League of Minnesota Cities is tracking it and is advocating that there would not be a moratorium. Same with Metro Cities and MLC. So certainly our, our affiliate organizations are lobbying, their lobbyists on, I guess indirectly on our behalf. It behooves us, I seem to keep, continue to talk to our own legislators to help them, help us, help champion that moratorium being lifted. So it does present challenges for us. If there's a moratorium extension, how that factors into the timing of all this is depending on if the July, if it's a July twenty-six moratorium or if it's through the whole bi- biennium of twenty-seven. In either one of those scenarios, it does delay us a couple of years, it goes without saying. Because there's also language in. Because there's also language in statute that, that city referendums have to be done. There's a legal opinion, they have to be done in even number of years. And so.
So we can't count on sales taxes for health right now.
Reality is, we're probably looking at twenty-eight or twenty-nine, maybe construction in thirty.
Right.
Right. So we can't.
I don't think that any of our, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't have a record of any of ours, our electeds being on the taxes committee. So if you know of anybody, if you have connections with anybody.
Share your keenness.
Yeah, I know. So, you know, that unofficially might be who has to kind of.
I'll weigh in on that. And I want to make it really clear, just for the purposes of anybody listening to this. It's not that this, I mean, I'm not representing that, well, sales tax solves it all by any means, but it is a tool that we could consider and having it available as a consideration would be helpful to us. I mean, I just want to be, because I, I don't want to be deluded to think that, oh, if we had that option, that would resolve all this.
That's the path. No, I mean, and I think the key, well, the key point is, I mean, what the legislature is doing is fundamentally interfering with local control, you know? And, and the, and Rest does not like the word option, just so you know. But, but having the option of a sales tax, we, we have faced significant budget challenges for the foreseeable future. And to take opportunities off the, off the table and say, okay, well, you can't do that, you can't do that, you can't do that. I mean, all of a sudden, we are forced into a position where the good solutions disappear and the bad solutions are the only ones we've got. And so it is a fundamental local control issue. And, you know, I'm not a big fan of the idea of implementing a sales tax, but I want that decision to be mine, ours as a leader in our city, not to have that taken away from me for consideration. Because I may change my mind, because I may, you know, you all may convince me that that's the best tool available.
Ultimately, it would be voted on by the.
That's right. That's right. It's not like.
So it's that, yeah, it's not like us implementing a sales.
Yeah. I mean, I think process simplification and, and not interfering with our, our ability to decide what's right for our residents is important.
And hypocrisy is not lost on me about who got the sales tax and then it's like, we got ours and nobody else.
Pull up the ladder behind us.
Yep.
Right, exactly.
You know, I just, I don't, I don't really appreciate that. But we, you know, all of the funding sources at all levels of government are drying up. And so they're, they're, they're almost leaving us with no options. It's not just bad options, but no options. So that's, that shouldn't be the only option.
Oh, that's right.
So that's not something we need to, we can rely on for the next two, three years.
Right.
So.
Well, depending on what happens in the legislature.
Even then, even then though, if it's.
Well, if they get rid of the moratorium, then we could start the process.
Right.
Yep. It's not gonna happen tomorrow, one way or the other.
Yeah, right. It's gonna be a few years.
Right. It's gonna be a few years, so we should just.
I'd rather it be a few years as opposed to eight years.
Yeah. But for our purposes tonight.
Yeah. But I just, like, it's, it's worth discussing, because it was mentioned a few times, that sale, that sales tax might be an option for funding. And it might, but it also might not.
Right.
That's right. That's right.
Anything we can do to help make it an option would be a nice thing.
You know, Rebecca, that's a good point. Staff feels the same way. It's not as though we're saying sales tax is the end all be all. It's more about having the option to have the conversation, as many cities around us have done. The, just to put in further context, as you recall, the University of Minnesota did a study for us and they looked, and they presented us with information. Those numbers have been updated. Darren and I have been looking at some correspondence as other cities have been communicating on this same, same scenario and have the same concerns that we do. The newer projections, just to give you a sense, the newer projections for Minnetoka is if a half a cent sales tax were to be implemented, like some of our surrounding cities, it would generate closer to six million. The U of M study was closer to four and a half million. While the national economy and the worldwide economy is in kind of influx, just with everything happening at the national level, our local economy is very strong and our businesses are doing very well. And so converting that six million dollars into what could we bond for would get us closer to eighty million. We could do an eighty million type dollar project and have the sales tax paid for that level. Looking at staff, we're not saying that's something we should fully do, but just, just so you have that information.
Or projects.
Or what's that?
Or projects.
Projects.
Yeah.
Projects.
Rebecca?
Well, in regards to the questions.
Yes, I thought we should get to the questions.
Okay. To use, I mean, to keep it really, from my perspective, simple. I mean, I think Brad's use of the word austerity, while it is a little uncomfortable. I mean, I think that's the lens we have to look at the twenty twenty-six budget from, which is we've taken on a lot over the past four, five, six years. And we're getting caught up and we've got these pressures and we've got needs. And so the idea of adding anything as like a council wishlist or a response. I mean, I'd love to say we could accelerate trial development or all of those things. And maybe that's a conversation for a later date as it relates to the franchise fee. But for, as far as the general budget goes, my position is that we have to rein it in as much as possible and that's with hiring and, you know, and potentially looking at, are there things that it's time to sunset? Are we things that we're doing just because we've always done them? And I don't mean that from even a staff perspective, but from a council policy perspective too. So that's my view. So that addresses, I think, both questions, one and two. You know, I really struggle, I thought Darren's illustrations of how to get some of these things accomplished, I thought it was really helpful, you know, as much as I would hate to see the levy impact, you know, the, the last two options, you know, if, if you're telling me, it really makes sense to remodel station two, which I'm not totally convinced on that, you know? But those two scenarios show some incremental progress in a way that could buy us some time in respect to getting some support at the state level for future fire station resources, potentially address possible, you know, sales tax as an issue, but also moves the, moves things forward to get some things accomplished with the most acute needs. So I think that is my perspective. I, you know, I, it makes my stomach a little upset to see the levy at that number, but if we really can support it with necessarily, necessary accomplishments, then I'm comfortable doing that.
Thank you, Rebecca. Other comments, counsel?
I'm kind of in line with that. I, I mean, the idea of adding after what we just saw is just not where I'm at tonight. And I am so deeply grateful to our fire and police leadership for their really generosity and honesty and, you know, what they feel they can do. I don't, if, if something changes and we feel we can't sacrifice that staff, we shouldn't. And to me, to me, public safety is, is just my top, top priority. And I, I personally don't see, if, if station two, if remodeling doesn't do what we need it to do, I just kind of feel like it's sort of throwing good money after bad. I just want us to do something that will last for years, that accomplishes what the fire department really needs and set us on the path for really prioritizing what they've identified as important. And so that's where I land on that. We do have, I think the mayor hit on, and I, I think there was a slide that showed for the recreation facilities sort of what the priorities were. And I agree with those priorities and I agree, of course, with the fire station priorities, because the people that, that need them are telling us what they need. So I, I, I think at least the locations of the facilities have been identified and I think Kelly did, you know, as far as the recreation facilities, talk a little bit about à la carte and blah, blah, blah. And I think that, you know, as we get closer, we can start getting in the weeds. This is really a high-level discussion and I am definitely, even though we want to sunset some things, I still feel that the Marsh is an investment and I feel like it has potential. And I feel like we are so close to making it something that it, that it should and can be. So I'm not really ready to jettison and sell it. I'm not even close to doing that. And in terms of preferred financing methods, timeframes, I think we've already said, you know, some of these things really can't wait eight years. I mean, even when we want something and we know how we're gonna finance it, it still takes four years to build a fire truck. So, you know, I mean, the preferred financing methods are the methods that can spread the pain across the greatest population. I know that sales taxes are regressive, but I think, you know, it, it does spread it around a lot more people. I mean, it just gives us another tool in the toolbox. And I'm trying to keep the financial pain to a minimum for our tax base.
Thank you. Other comments? Kimberly?
Yeah, I will, I mean, I pretty much agree with, with much of what's been said. I'll just say like, and this can be for future discussions, but if we have to look at what, what services we're gonna cut, if there's a way to do more community engagement, because I didn't find the survey particularly, and I know it's different people, but like, one of the highest priorities for people was parks and trails and one of the highest things that people were willing to cut was parks and trails. So that makes, that makes it a little difficult for me to decide what's a priority based on community sentiment. So if we could maybe get some more clarity, I'm not sure how, but some more community engagement to find out what, what really matters to our residents.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Other comments?
I mean, I don't have anything to add, other than I felt the same way. Like, when you were talking about it this morning, I was like, I can't, I can't imagine adding anything with all of this. It just isn't, I can't imagine it, so.
Thanks, Paula.
Thank you. I guess if we're talking about priorities to be considered for twenty twenty-six, and I'll say I also agree with much of what has already been said, but my, just high level right now, I would be, I would like us to try to stay under nine percent, like kind of in that eight percent levy range. And if that means kind of going slow walking through some of the scenarios, potential scenarios that Darren came up with, you know, the next three years are gonna be hard. After that, it looks like the general levy goes down quite a bit. And, you know, unless we're using things like the community investment fund or, you know, kind of getting some other, you know, sales tax or whatever, just working to work within our means and not putting too much of a burden on our residents, I think is, is gonna be important, given the uncertainties, the general economic uncertainties, given, you know, kind of housing costs and what we're trying to do there. So, you know, just given everything right now, the general economic uncertainty, I think that would be my preference in terms of top-line things, just not even getting operations programming capital. That would, for me, be, you know, desirable. And in terms of the community business survey results, for me, one thing that aligned with my own values is the kind of desire to do more in terms of our community action and climate action and adaptation program. You know, we're talking about a lot of other, like, short-term wants and needs for our community, which are, you know, obviously fire and public safety, we're doing pretty well in those things right now. You know, I don't think we're, we're doing terrible in those things, but, you know, in terms of doing our part to leave a planet that's viable, you know, I would like to, to put our, at least a little bit of money where our values are in that. And I'm sorry that we lost the green core value, but just, or personnel, but it'd be great to see some way to kind of move forward on that. So that would be, you know, those two things are on, on my wishlist, I guess. And then facility improvements, are there specific projects? I think we already talked about those and I think those are fairly clear right now. I, I really like the idea of possibly using the community investment fund for, you know, kind of kicking the ball off and getting some basic improvements that, you know, what has to be done and then maybe some, you know, cosmetic improvement so that we can, that, like you said, would help kind of generate revenues, attract and generate revenues are what makes sense to me. But also kind of being austere, but also being very intentional and deliberate about, you know, what we, what we need, what's already going well and what we're trying, you know, to get to perfection on. You know, maybe we, we need to back down on that or stretch that timeframe out a little bit so that we can look at some other things from that, from my perspective and value system, you know, are important for not just this generation, but, you know, seven generations down the road.
Anyone else? Couple of comments. The, I mean, you know, our eyes are bigger than our stomachs here. I mean, we've got, we've got a lot of needs and we, and resources are challenging. And basically, I think the way we've looked at things tonight, and it's very early, is that we, we basically assumed a status quo in terms of economics. We didn't talk about what if there's a recession, what if, you know, and there's, there's a lot of risk and what if out there. And when I, back in the days when I was a new products guy, you know, whenever we do a, I would do a projection on the potential of the new product, I'd say, okay, what's the best case, what's the worst case and what's most likely? And I think we have to think, bring some of that thinking to us. Okay, well, how do our priorities change if we have a recession? We don't control whether we're gonna have a recession or not. It's one of those uncontrollables, but it's clear that affects us. So I think, I think we have to bring a little of that thinking into our budget, because we are in very uncertain economic times. Today was a good day for the economy, but, you know, tomorrow may, could be, could be equally as bad. You know, we, we are in uncertain economic times, so we can't just, I mean.
And I do think we mentioned, I mean, I think it's very top of mind for all of us and I, and so it is the way I'm thinking about this.
No, well, that's in terms of, in terms of mitigating risk, but I think that, that's part of what we have to do. Then the other piece of it is that, you know, and you've probably heard me change a little bit too in some of my comments tonight, we, we need to be looking at any and all revenue sources to, to answer some of the challenges we face, because our, our needs are far greater than our abilities to pay for them. And so, yeah, should we consider local sales tax? Yeah, we shouldn't not consider anything. But, but the other thing I, I wonder, and this is maybe la-la land a little bit, but, you know, we do have a strong business community. And, you know, what about, what about partnerships, public, you know, exactly. What about naming rights? What about totally off-the-wall, different source of revenue that we have never utilized before? And maybe we're Minnetoka and we don't do that, but, but the reality is, we have to, we have to get creative. I, I was at David Schultz's political, graduate political science class a week ago today. And I said, you know, one of the things about Minnetoka that makes us unique is our brand is Minnetoka. Lake Minnetoka is tied to our brand. But what happens is, at the legislature, all those greater Minnesota people, all those people from Minneapolis and St. Paul think we're the rich people. And I said, you know, I looked today at. And I said, you know, I looked today at the median house price in Minnetoka, which is $520,000. I looked at Wayzata, which is $1.08 million, the median house price, and I looked at St. Louis Park, and it's $370,000. So understand this about Minnetoka, we look a lot more like St. Louis Park than we do like Wayzata and all the lakes communities, but in the minds of anybody who doesn't live right here, we are all those communities. Everybody's a millionaire here. I mean, when you tell people you're from Minnetoka, the first thing they ask is, oh, do you live on the lake? I mean, we've all had that experience, but that's the perception. That is the battle we face and the battle we fight. So everybody thinks we're a bunch of rich people who, when we ask for things, we're a bunch of rich whiners, when in reality, we're a lot more like St. Louis Park than we are like Wayzata, or Deep Haven, or Greenwood, or any of those cities, or Excelsior, any of those cities. So that's a battle we face. So I think in terms of our asks, we have to get to the basics. We have to ask for public safety, we have to talk about the deficiency of our fire, our fire stations, we have to talk about our response times, and we have to really ask for the blocking and tackling, because we can make the case there, and, and we've got a stronger story to tell. I mean, even Opus is a great project, and tied to transit and everything else, but again, we have to deal with the perceptions that exist about what Minnetoka is like. I think our chances are better for fire stations, given our deficiencies, than they are for public realm improvements to Opus. That doesn't mean we shouldn't be asking for that, but I think we have to prioritize what we ask for, given, given the perceptions that we have to deal with, because people don't make decisions based on reality. They make them based on perceptions, and the perceptions are not, don't work in our favor. So, you know, you know, I just think even added creativity in terms of funding sources, I think we have to, we have to really dig deep, we have to talk to the major corporations in our city and ask, you know, I mean, United Health, I mean, they got a lot of problems, but they got a lot of money too, and, and we are providing a lot of, a lot of police support to them.
Yes, we are.
We have been so supportive of them, and they're paying for some of that, I know that too. But, you know, we have to get creative in terms of asking, so I think we need to look for new funding, funding sources, because we, we take care of our corporations, we take, you know, why is Minnetoka, why does Minnetoka have the largest company in the state, United Health, and the largest private company in the country, if not the world, in Cargill? You know, let's, let's mine some of those, we take pretty good care of those companies. Let's, maybe it's time to ask for something back, and I know, I know that's, that's begging, I don't like that, but, you know.
I'll beg.
I'm willing, I'm willing to be creative. So anyway, you know, I think, so go down the questions, question, I made my long statement now, but, you know, I think the priorities we've laid out are appropriate. I talked, I think fire station's first, I think we prioritized in terms of our nice-to-haves, in terms of the community center and, and the Marsh, and I think we've, I think we've laid those out pretty well. You know, so, have I covered all the questions? I think, you know, I think we know what we need, and it's, and I, and I want to say, Darren, I thought your little bit of modeling was very helpful, because I heard what Paula said about 9%. My view is, it's not 9%, it's less than 10, in the nines, we've got to stay out of the double digits. I mean, I really think that. And I remember, you know, about a long time ago, we, we needed money for streets, and the council decided, none of, I was the only person on the council way back then, and we decided, and I think our levy increase got to be 11%, 11%, 12% for two years, and I think the public understands paying more when you are very clear about your needs, if they don't feel it's going to last forever or too long. And so I think we can get away with two years, and three is a little tough, but, but I think if we can make a finite ask for finite, specific reasons, I think we can, we can get away with that, as hard as that will be. I'd much rather have it for two years than three, but I think, I think if we can keep it below 10, and we can, you know, have a good story to tell about how finite a period of time we're asked for, I think we can pull that off. But it's, it's going to be challenging, again, the wild card is what's the economy going to do?
Exactly. And I mean, and I just, I get, I do get a little worried about making, making plans and kind of, you know, maybe getting to the preliminary budget and then, or, or maybe it's right before we get to the preliminary budget and the economy tanks, and then we're scrambling like, you know, what, what can we do? And I, and that feels like about what the timing would be.
So I spoke with Kent Carlson today, he is the mayor of Deep Haven, and Deep Haven's one of those cities that I think their median house price is at, or in over a million dollars. But he said, you know, I was talking to a resident this week, they lived in Deep Haven for a long time, and they paid a relatively modest price for their home. But, you know, and, and oh, by the way, Deep Haven's looking at hiring their own assessor, because they thought Hennepin County did such a horrible job on their assessing and created a lot of problems, but that's, that's another topic. But he said, you know, this family, they've lived in Deep Haven for a long time, but their taxes are just going up so much, they told me that they're going to move because they really were not, they're not high-income people, they happen to have a valuable house, but the taxes are such that they can't afford to live there anymore. And you know what? That is, that is a story, plus 25% of our residents are 65 years of age or older. When your incomes don't go up, they go down. You know, so those are the things that we, we are grappling with. We, you know, we, when, when you get those nasty grams from senior citizens, you know, who are my age, who, who say, well, you're taxing me out of my house, I mean, that's going to be true for more and more people. So, you know, I think we really have to look at, how can we get as creative as possible? Because, because we're, these are challenging times, so. But I, I think we're, I think we agree on the priorities, I hope we provided enough direction, but we don't have good options. Sorry. I don't hate to be Debbie Downer, but every once in a while it happens.
So, kind of just following up on those points, I'm just wondering, you know, not to, again, heartburn for staff, but should we be thinking about having kind of a planning and plan B as we're going through these exercises? I guess we are.
Well, it never hurts. I mean, it never, it never hurts.
I don't, I don't know, maybe staff does that anyway, so.
Well, I think they do, but.
Well, I would just say that as, again, it's the whole budget process.
Right.
This is coming in front of you many more times, we're going to have, every time it comes in front of you, we'll have new information about the economy and the ever-evolving circumstances. So I think we'll, we pivot very well, and I think part of what you've seen in the past from staff presentations is, as we get closer to August, when you have to adopt a preliminary tax levy, we'll, we'll have a menu of options of, here's, here's things that can be, if the situation warrants things to be taken off the table, we'll have a menu of things for us to explore.
Good.
I think that's more productive than having, trying to do multiple budgeting scenarios.
Right.
So I think it's more keeping, keeping a tab on the things that are budget impactful, things that are more cordial services, and things that have more discretionary type, there's not a ton of discretion in all this, but certainly there are some things that we'll have on that list that can be for consideration to, to take off, or if the economy goes the other way, things that we could possibly look at adding to, so we certainly will keep that as a possibility.
All right. Does anyone have anything to add? Have we given you the direction that is helpful, or have I?
No, I think it's been very helpful. No, I think as we started out tonight, and I said probably a few times, we're starting out here, and I think we've made some way of understanding what our top of mind for you, where your priorities are. So I think, yeah, I think tonight, we've served the purpose of getting, trying to start getting it now.
First step.
First step. Yeah.
I think, I think the Fire Chiefs' presentation on the staffing and response and all of the service model gives us a lot of good context for some of those discussions.
So I think you have a just. And I would just say, I think you have the staff, and hopefully you feel that over the years, staff has been creative as we look at new innovations, use of technology, finding our rev, different ways of being efficient in our operations, because that's where the creativity also comes in, how we operate, not, not even on the revenue side of the equation. So it's on the expenditure side where I think Darren and I see, see all the time from all of our directors, just ways of doing our operations differently, things that you don't probably see every day at a council level, but certainly I can tell you that our staff is always looking at ways of streamlining, making things more efficient, using technologies, investing in technologies to do that very thing. The harder side, and to be honest, I think the harder side is on the revenue side, and it, certainly there are always the kind of creative ways, that's why we've put an emphasis on the grants, to find different, track our grants and understand their grants from that perspective. Certainly, we've relied on billing permit revenue as kind of, kind of our saving grace at times, and certainly the economy has a huge impact on our permit revenues. Yeah, outside of that, it's, I think we're all looking for the money tree plant that can fill in that, that gap, but certainly we'll look to find ways on, on revenue exploration. Just speaking really quickly, because I know we're up against our time, like with United Health Group, they have, they've offered us a facility in, down in their park, down in Opus, so we're looking at perhaps a contract to expand a police station, a substation at a very good value. So, yeah, there are, there are things like that in the works that we'll continue to bring forward to as they come to fruition, but, yeah, certainly looking at all those options, both on the revenue side and expenditure side.
Great. And the only thing I would say is, I don't want, I hope that none of my comments or any of our comments mean to suggest that we, we don't think that's happening. I mean, I, you know, we have an outstanding staff, and you are tremendously creative. If we can bring a few new ideas that can bump, you know, contribute to that, great, but, you know, I really, I have a high level of confidence in our team.
And I don't want, like, I don't want Kelly or any of the staff to feel like we don't value recreation. I mean, it's, it literally makes life in Minnetoka, life in Minnetoka, it's the quality of life stuff that's so important and makes us distinctive, but, you know, when, when the patient is, is sick or needs attention, you know, you need what you need, and so.
Well, thank you. I would just end my comments by saying, again, thank you, council, appreciate it. We knew tonight was, I say we, I think, yes, staff, we knew that tonight would be a longer, perhaps, conversation as we get through some of these challenging budgets and just given all the capital needs, and that, that's, that's the difference in all this, is just funding for all these long-term capital needs. I still find it an exhilarating exercise, because we're looking at the future of our city and how we position it long-term.
And my takeaway is that, you know, I think if there's any way we can get these community center improvements made, we want to do that, because it is, I mean, it's, it's the part of our city that more people come to than any other facility in our community, and we needed to reflect well on, on Minnetoka. So I think we have pretty broad agreement on that. So, anyway, we got to talk about study session work plan too, so unless anyone has any last comments, we'll move on. Mike, it's up to you.
Oh, yes. Nothing has changed, council, so you do have, in your last agenda item is the upcoming study session topics, if that's up on the screen or not, if it is in your packet.
Yeah, it's right here.
That's okay, we got it right here.
It's not up on the screen.
It's right here. It's right here. We've got it on open time.
So in June, we've got our CIP, so we'll, we'll be back at the budget next month, so we'll be really dissecting their CIP, looking at our EIP, our 30-minute open time, and then in July, we've got all things housing, so I know there's a number of things that Julie and her team will be presenting on housing, and then we'll also talk about youth programming and opportunities. August, again, is a big one, just with the general fund budget, and then our infrastructure rate study and asset management, we may move some things around with that, just with some scheduling, but we're booked out the next few months, so that's our game plan, unless, council, you tell us otherwise.
Thank you.
All good, thank you. We did, considering all the stuff.